Welcome you all to the Monday, February 22nd, 2016, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. The Board has just returned from an executive session, and we have an open session. I invite you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda are announcements. First one I'll make is one that's going to be made later this evening also, but just that on Wednesday, March 2nd, we'll be having grinder pump installation training for plumbers and contractors. This is by Environment One. This is the company that we've assigned contract with for the grinder pumps. It'll be held at the Falmouth Public Library Herman Foundation Meeting Room from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is for plumbers and contractors. It is not for the homeowners, but is to make sure that they get the training they need to be able to do the installation of these grinder pumps. And I'm sure Mr. Jack will be telling his board about that during his presentation. Second announcement is just to let people know that it's going to be an exciting girls' basketball game this Thursday evening between the Falmouth Academy Girls and the Falmouth High School Girls. That's going to be held up at the Academy. They're two of the top teams on the Cape, and the proceeds for any of the -- when they take at the door, we'll all be going to the Falmouth Service Center. Both teams have agreed to that as a scrimmage that they're putting forward, and we're happy to have the proceeds go to the service center.
Great.
Any other announcements?
What was the date for that?
Uh, this.
For the basketball game?
This Thursday, February 25th.
Okay.
At 7:00 p.m. at the Falmouth Academy Gym. Any other announcements? Any public comment, any comment on something that's not on our agenda this evening? And please limit your comment to two minutes.
I'm going to run out so that you can see it.
Thanks, Jean.
You did just receive your email today also.
Thanks, Jerry. Oh, Becky's not here. I can give a tour if you like. Even better.
All right, good. Thank you, Jane.
Even though I wrote it, I'm going to have to read it. I can't speak it. I believe the Board of Selectmen should include the EDIC's plans for the solar array at the town landfill as an agenda item as soon as possible. The expectation of generating more energy than the town can use has led to the possibility of generating enough more energy than the town can use, and it has led to the possibility of selling excess power to other towns. Before taking such action, it would behoove Falmouth to remove the two 1.65-megawatt wind turbines, which have a very sorry history in the town, and generate the power to operate the wastewater treatment plant using solar power, a source of green energy everyone would welcome, including the Energy Committee, the Climate Action Team, and the Board of Selectmen. It will save money and restore pride and goodwill among the citizens of Falmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Remich.
Thanks, Jerry.
Anyone else? Mrs. White?
Good evening. Once again, I'm here to advise everyone in town about the Cape Light Compact. One important thing to know about the compact this year is that we have the negotiated rate for per kilowatt hour is 1.2% per kilowatt hour lower than the ever source rate. So you may want to switch over to Cape Light Compact. There's no cost for shifting back, and it also helps supporting the administrative costs of the compact, and they're giving you a better energy source in addition to the Energy Efficiency Program. And there's the program, the basic program that they have where they do energy audits and help you with subsidies for energy-efficient light bulbs as well as appliances. But the number to call is 800-797-6699, and that is for the basic program. In addition to that, there's a low-income program through the Cape Cod Housing Assistance Corporation that has better deals for lower-income households, and their number is 508-771-5400. So I encourage everyone, you know, this dark season, we can see that we've put on our lights a lot more, but it goes beyond that. It also has to do with insulation in the home as well as appliances and other things that are different programs. So I encourage people in Falmouth to take advantage of this, and there is funding available. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. The next item we're to approve our minutes, unfortunately, our agenda lists them as the minutes of February 8th, and our meeting actually was held on February 11th, and so technically.
We met February 11th?
Excuse me?
We met February 11th, 2016?
Right. We met on February 11th, and so we really can't approve them until we have them listed on the agenda correctly. So we'll have to hold off on those.
I have a comment I'd like to make on page two. Under -- this is February 11th?
Right. We actually, we have to hold off and not do this.
Oh, we can't do this tonight? Oh, okay.
So, under summary of actions, first is a special one-day liquor license for the Beat NB Cancer Foundation. This is at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds on Sunday, August 21st, 2016.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment. What is NB Cancer Foundation? Just the N.B. meaning? I couldn't find it anywhere in the application. I was just curious. I mean, it's not such a foundation.
Thanks for asking. I say, thanks for asking. The same question came to me.
Be nice to know what it means. It's not New Bedford, we know that.
I don't have an answer for you either. As I was reading it, I was thinking, I should have known what that is, but...
It's not New Bedford, is it? No.
No.
Well? Yeah.
I was thinking neuroblastoma, but I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think we can approve it, but I think we should ask them what their full title is.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. None in the eyes have it. And then we have four special one-day liquor licenses for the Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society for the Portuguese Festival on May 15th, June 25th, June 26th, and August 28th.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. None in the eyes have it. We also have a special request, one-day liquor license for the Falmouth Garden Club. This is the Falmouth Historical Society on Sunday, July 10th, 2016.
Move approval?
Second?
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. None in the eyes have it. And then we have an application for a change of manager of a wine and malt common victual license. This is at Papa Gino's.
Move approval?
I'm not sure we have anyone here for that.
Second?
We do have the report from the police department that they've done a Cory check and that they have no problem. Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Closed. None in the eyes have it. Moving on to our administrative orders. First, we need our signatures on the presidential primary warrant, so I'll pass that down also. Do we have a vote to accept the donation from Mike Daphne Builders in the amount of $500 to the Falmouth Public Library donation account in the children's department?
I'm with acceptance.
Motion second to accept. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With appreciation.
Absolutely.
Next is to accept the Wanderin Alexson grant from the Department of Public Health, the amount of $15,000. The one question we do have to ask is to what future costs are we -- are there any future costs that we are tying ourselves to by accepting this grant?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, you know, the answer to that is that the sad reality is that the likelihood is great that overdoses are going to continue. It's a national scourge that we are caught up in, in the Commonwealth and throughout Cape Cod as well as nationally, and this is a drug that can reverse a portion of the life-taking symptoms of an overdose, and failure to have grant funds to help support it would nonetheless require that a lot of life-saving services would have to go forward for, you know, victims of overdoses. So I think the two are related, but I don't think the town is in a position to do anything but to respond and provide the same life-saving services as always.
Just in our general policy on grants, accepting, if we do think there are going to be future costs, we are supposed to direct them to the finance department, by the finance committee.
Well, let me just say, you know, in this case, I think this is for a material or product, not a service. So I think we would have to take up this cost as a town regardless of this grant if this doesn't hold out as being sufficient for the need that we have to address.
I actually don't think this does tie us to necessarily have to make the cause. It just ties us to asking the question in the future, do we want to continue funding it? We're not obligated to.
Yes.
I think we will be morally obligated to it as opposed to financially obligated. So I have no problem getting stuck with that moral obligation.
Well, I move acceptance of a grant for $15,000 for our --
Second. But I also think that it's been documented, I think in the news, that the legislature has really moved forward on this and allocated these funds. I mean, I think we've all been following that carefully because police departments were expecting that the state would have done this drug that they have, so that's good.
Chief Dunn also mentioned that the chiefs in the state had gotten together in process as well, so...
And as the board directed, Mr. Sissoko and I did send a letter supporting the House bill with particular mention of the efforts that Chief Dunn has been doing in a real leadership role and a groundbreaking role of the task force for Falmouth. And that as a community, we are very supportive of the House bill in another way to be able to fight the battle that we count.
That was well done.
Thank you. It was well written. Appreciate it.
Our next item, a letter in support of the West Falmouth Library and town of Falmouth Land Swap, the West Falmouth Library Building Project. Mr. McGaughy, since you're here, would you like to say any words? I have a letter prepared to send on behalf of this.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to give you an update. We are hoping pending three items to begin construction this summer. We need an additional, we have raised 2.15 million. We need an additional 250,000 to begin construction. Our contractor and architect are working on the final construction bearings, which we'll submit to the building department shortly, so we need our building permit. And we need the legislature, the purpose of this letter, to approve the land swap that has been agreed to. So we're very anxious after, you know, working on designing and raising funds to get the project underway, we hope, this summer.
And if I, so this is both a preservation and an expansion project?
Yes. There is preservation of the original building, restoration work. There is an addition mainly to provide better access and safety. We're adding sprinklers for the first time. There was a part of the building that dates from the '70s that's going to be totally rehabilitated, and for the first time, we're adding significant outdoor space with a connection to the library so that in Clement, where the library can invite people to enjoy the outdoors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all in favor of a letter being sent on behalf of the board?
Yes, I would move to approve that the letter be sent.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Closed. None. We'll take that. Can I turn it now?
I've said I had it scheduled.
Next, we have public hearings, and so those need to be on schedule. Any chance that we could go into the liquor license violation policy discussion?
Sure.
I did reach out to a few of the different restaurateurs about their thoughts on this because I felt that the way to make it most effective is to know that we have as many people supporting it as possible. And I did get some feedback. One of them was if there's any way that the name of the person who actually did serve could be put in public record, that that would be a very important detriment, that would be a way to deter for making sure they don't do it again. If they know that they're actually the one, and they are the ones responsible for having it done, and this is what they, you know, will have the liquor license, and we'll put that out there, make it public record, maybe it makes it harder for them to get a job and they'll take it very, very seriously. The other option is to whether on our offenses, we want to include an and/or up to a fine of $1,000. And just that we could do a suspension or we could also throw in an additional fine because it was more egregious violation. I think to have the backbone, both a suspension and/or a fine might be useful. And the third comment that we had made was, or received, was that the licensed swiping machines are particularly useful for liquor stores where there's a one point of sale. But if you have a swiping machine in a restaurant, it really doesn't, you have so many different servers, it just really doesn't serve the same well.
Got you.
And how that list is a major piece of the first offense, we might still have it as, we might not list it quite as strong.
Well, I was going to say, I just thought it gives the board very broad options, in some, minimum, maximum, and anywhere in between. But I think it's really helpful because when you do come to the hearing, it's always good to know what the parameters are and what you should be looking for during the hearing, and this will be very helpful to do that. So, good job, where strength is not here. Okay, that's good.
So the two specific changes I'd like to add to it. One would be under each offense, under the maximum sanction, the phrase "and/or a fine of up to $1,000."
Where it says, "up to suspension?"
Well, for each offense, it says maximum sanction, up to a six-day suspension license, and/or a fine of up to $1,000. And for each offense, it still says maximum sanction, and we can still say "and/or a fine of up to $1,000" for each of the different times it comes across.
If you ask...
And also, under the minimum sanction, would be recording of the person serving the alcohol.
Okay.
I'd like to speak on that.
Okay.
I don't necessarily think that the best policy would be to potentially target people who may have not gotten adequate training. In other words, it could be just, it could have a big impact on their ability to get a job in the future, possibly. And, you know, the situation could well be as a result of a lack of training in terms of the management's policy or the equipment they have. So I think that, you know, in fact, I know that we saw some of that during the last hearings. And, you know, I think that the, you know, if the employee is in a situation where there is a violation, you know, that really has got to be looked at from a management level at least first. I mean, and I, as, you know, if there is to be a deterrent effect, when one person, you know, an employee goes to get a job at, say, another bar, for example, a lot of times, the new employer will call the old employer for a reference. And if, you know, that could be the source of, you know, where that information is transferred, I don't necessarily see the benefit of making, you know, taking the, you know, sort of the least paid person and really making a spectacle of them at the hearing. So I would vote in favor of the initial change, but I would not be in favor of naming that person.
I think I kind of agree with Sue on that because really, the responsibility is with the owner, the manager. Granted, each employee has their own responsibility as well, but I think in the end, it's almost saying that the failure is more appropriately assigned to the individual who actually served the drink, where that's not really the case. So I, and I'm not sure that publicizing a person's name, I agree, is going to have any great benefit at all. I mean, it would obviously make everybody else who's a server think twice about it, but I'm not sure it has any real public purpose in making their names public.
License, as you stated, is held by the owner, is not held by the person serving.
Right. Good point, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it also puts us in a position of making sure that we have adequate evidence. I mean, it makes us the judge and jury, and I'm not sure that's a comfortable position to put the town in. So I think there's a legal issue that we don't want to, we don't want to go down that road for that reason. I hear what you're saying, but I think it's going to be up to that manage, excuse me, that owner to decide whether, in a reference to somebody else that's inquiring about an employee's performance, they want to include such a thing, and I bet you they don't for the very reason that we just mentioned, the liability issue.
And the last point that was raised was on our, looking at the past history, relationship compliance checks or health inspections, whether we want to include language talking about length of number of years that the establishment has been in practice, do we want to treat businesses differently that have been around for 10 years, never had a problem, as opposed to this is their first year of operation and they're already having a problem? Do we want to put that into part of our deliberation, or is that, do you feel that's already in that description of past history?
I think it's, I think it's relevant to have it in the deliberation. I mean, there was someone, I think, the last time, who'd been in business for a long time and had not had any kind of a violation. So I think that's important to recognize their past experience in a positive way.
Okay. So what I suggest is in that line, it says past history, relationship to compliance checks or health inspections, including length, number of years of operations, business.
Because now we actually will have the history.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we can consider the violations only for the past four years, but we could also consider good service for 20 years within our deliberation. It doesn't help.
Yeah.
So if we could add that line saying, just including a number of years of operation of the business, number two, and I would move that we would also add "and/or a fine of up to $1,000" on each of the maximum sanctions would be the change I'd make, and I will withdraw the other recommendation.
I'll make the motion that those two changes be made.
Okay.
Sam?
Before we get into the final version, in the next paragraph, under additional requirement considerations, I, there was certain ambiguity that resonated in me when I read the second sentence. "A change of ownership of the licensed establishment, but not a change of managers, will reset the count previous offenses to zero or at zero." That aside, but not a change of managers, could be misconstrued, and it seems to me ultimately that we just want to make the owner responsible, and that if it happens to be a change, I suppose there's a change of owners, but they keep the same manager. Does that reset it?
If they keep the same manager, but the ownership changes?
Yeah.
That would reset it.
Yeah, well, I, and I have no problem with that, but, okay. But I just, it was the wording of it that kind of was a bit ambiguous.
I think if you eliminate the "but not a change of managers," it wouldn't change the policy at all.
Exactly. So I, and I think that aside should be struck, just eliminate the...
Well, a comment on that, sometimes establishments change their, just their name for whatever business reason, the ownership is the same and the manager is the same, and I think that language was meant to address that particular circumstance where it's, you know, pie in the nose, you know, one versus pie in the nose two, or what, you know, whatever that is. And so in that instance, there should not be a resetting of the clock because it's...
Oh, agreed.
Okay.
I'm only referring to this, the piece about not a change of managers, that, I don't know. I kind of like what Doug is saying, strike that aside, but not a change of managers, strictly keep it with the ownership.
And not mention the manager.
I wouldn't mind them actually having to hold on to the violations in the past. I mean, it's only a four-year hold, but I understand, we probably can't do that from one owner to the next.
Yeah.
The thing that happens is these institutions get a reputation of being a place where you can go and buy when you're underage.
Right.
And they don't know that the owner... And they don't know that the ownership has changed and still go for that very, at least when I was in high school, I remember that, my hearing about that.
Yeah.
So, strike the "but not a change of managers."
That would be my recommendation. I think it reads more directly that way, and it's what we intend.
Okay.
And then, one other question in the third paragraph under that heading, let's see, it's actually entirely a sentence. It refers to establishments who are targeted by local law enforcement compliance checks and abide by the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with respect to the sale of alcohol to minors during said compliance. Checks shall be noticed in writing. Is "notice" the proper word, or should it be notified in writing by local law enforcement within 30 days with a copy to the board?
A notice is a technical legal term.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on our liquor license violation policy? So, we have the three changes. One is the addition of the "and/or up to a thousand dollars." We have the adding the idea in the number two about the length of years of operation and striking "but not a change of managers," are the three recommendations.
But my, my motion is, stands right now, it has not been seconded, the first two changes.
Okay.
I'm not going to...
Amended to include the third.
All right, so we have, the first two changes is a motion on the floor. We have a second on that motion.
I do have a second.
Second.
I just have one, such a, on the third paragraph down there.
Let's get this one out of the way, because then we have these other ones. All those in favor of those two changes?
I'd like to amend the motion.
It's my motion, we have to vote on it. It's, I made the motion, Pat seconded.
Oh, but, and you can't amend the motion?
Let's just deal with this one, and if you want to make another motion, we can do that.
Right.
All those in favor of those two changes, say aye.
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 Okay. Sam, do you want to make any amendment on getting rid of "but not a change of managers?"
Yes, I would like to modify the, the policy to strike the aside, but not a change of managers.
Second.
The motion is second, further discussion. All those in favor of that change?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three in favor and one opposed. And Pat, did you have?
I just asked on that third paragraph there, just change "who" to "that" in the second word in the paragraph. Establishments "that," establishments aren't whose.
I'll talk to the Supreme Court about that, right?
Just to make it, just say something about the King's English, you know.
All right, so we have a request to change "who" to "that."
Yes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, we all have a motion to approve the policy on hold.
It's amended?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the violation policy as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. That moves us on to our hearings. The first is from Lawrence White. I believe that this is a, Michael Borselli is here, finished up from downstairs. Great. Requested us to delay it if he couldn't make it here in time. So, first, let me read into the records the public hearing notice. The Falmouth Selectmen will hold a public hearing under section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, February 22nd, 2016, 7:30 p.m. The Selectmen's meeting room, Falmouth Town Hall, and the application Lawrence White to construct a fixed pier that will extend 50 feet beyond Mean High Water into Green Pond and located at 194 Acapescot Road east Falmouth. Area factors, Green Pond. Interested parties to review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's office, and this was in publication date Friday, February 12th and Friday, February 19th. Mr. Borselli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Michael Borselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, Lawrence White, who owns this property. Mr. White has applied to you to permit the construction of a private recreational pier at his property, which is at 194 Acapescot Road. It has frontage on the waters of Green Pond. There is a coastal bank adjacent to that, is a salt marsh, and then land under the ocean and land containing shellfish just east of the salt marsh. You may recall, in the not-too-distant past, this board reviewed and issued a special permit for the abutting property owned by Daniel Walsh. Mr. White adopted the same design. It's a twin of that structure, with one difference, it's not as long as Mr. Walsh's because the water depth is significant, is sufficient in a shorter distance for Mr. White. We submitted the plans and application to Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission has previously reviewed and approved and issued an order of conditions for this pier. Part of that review required the performance of a shellfish survey and associated report. There were some low densities of Cohogs found in the nearshore areas. They did not rise to the threshold of significant in accordance with Falmouth Wetland Regulations. In the area where the boat will tie, which is at the terminal end, is more than 50 feet away from any area of significant densities of shellfish. The overall length of the pier from Mean High Water is 49 feet. The proposed boat would tie at the end, parallel to shore. The dock is timber, pile-supported, typical to what you've reviewed in the past, elevated for public access underneath into a lot of sunlight penetration so that there's no impact to the salt marsh. The pilings were spaced such that no pilings actually penetrate the salt marsh, we're able to bridge over the salt marsh completely. The pier terminates on land, and there's a gentle slope down to that. All of these details are shown on the plans in the application. We reviewed the plan with the harbor master, and he has no concerns. Happy to answer any questions.
Pat?
I have a question. I noticed in the special conditions, there's one that, that condition three, which has to do with having the utilities, prior to the work, a revised plan should be submitted depicting all the, all the utility to the dock pier, both water and electrical be included in the deed. But four, which actually states that only one boat shall be moored at that dock.
Yes.
I, sometimes in the past, the Conservation Commission has also considered a special condition like that to be, also become part of the deed. And so, I would like to have that included in there, if that's a possibility. I know we don't have town council here tonight.
Well, I could tell you, if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you, the entire document, the order of conditions, is recorded at the registry of deeds, which makes all the conditions binding, some there more specific, I'm wanting to make sure are ongoing, but by virtue of recording that document...
It will be there?
Yes, and I, it certainly would be reasonable to expect that you could put the same condition and your, your permit is also recorded.
Okay. I, I say that because Green Pond is, is, is a pond of concern in terms of emerging contaminants and already contaminants. So, I think anything we can do to continue to protect that is important. So, I'll make sure that's in the motion. Thank you.
The length of the pier is 16 feet. Idea of the size of the boat, is that can be limited by that?
The length of the pier is 49 feet.
I'm sorry, of the T.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that limits, there's two limiting factors. The size of the T will limit this boat to something less than 20, 30 feet. I don't know that I want to specify that. There are some unique boats that can tie differently. But don't think, this is on the upper side of the Green Pond Bridge, which has a height limit. You can only get certain-sized boats up that far. You can't have any, you know, extensions of very, very high above the deck of the boat, so that also limits it. But it's, the expectation is it's going to be, you know, a modest mid 22 to 28-foot typical recreational boat with...
I understand the expectation, but I want to do what I can to make sure the expectation is actually met. And whether it's the size or length of the boat, or the size and weight of the engine that is going to be stirring up.
Sure.
The deeper that, heavier the boat is, the deeper that engine goes down into the ill grass and creates disturbance. And this one's different from a lot of the ones that I've seen recently. This is not a rebuild of a pier that's there. This is a new one.
Right.
Any idea how far, I couldn't tell in the plan as to how far across. I know the one next to it is longer, so it's certainly not going past the 25 percent restriction.
Right. It's certainly, it's, I estimate that the percentage of crossing to be less than 10 percent of Green Pond width.
Do you have any ability to give us the number of properties that have docks?
I could not this evening, but I can tell you that you can see the property to the north, the property to the south, and many others along the western shoreline of Green Pond have similar docks. I would like to point out that the one to the south was not a rebuild, that was a first-time dock as well.
This may not be the case to start it, but it does beg the question as to, does every property deserve one? And if it's many, that can go either way, saying, well, if it's 94 percent, how do we say no to the other 6 percent? If it's 52 percent, say, you know, we're getting close to a limit to them.
I don't think you can do it on a case-by-case basis. I think the board would have to set a policy and then stick to it.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
I agree.
Okay, any other questions on, for Mr. Borselli? Is anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application?
Mr. McCaffrey.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Not in opposition, nor on behalf. But... Hi, I'm Charlie McCaffrey, a member of the Coastal Pond Management Committee, and we have completed a draft harbor management plan for Green Pond, and one of the concerns was proliferation of docks. In fact, many years ago, NOAA did a study of Green Pond and produced a video showing alternatives to the situation where every property would have a dock. However, when we were doing the study and looking at, and being concerned about proliferation of docks, we did not consider it a major issue because there are not many properties, these are obviously exceptions, that can meet the standards of the conservation, that is, depth to water, adequate depth to water with less, with 100 feet or less, or the presence of shellfish, which we had analyzed. So, there were few, there were only a few properties in our estimate that could acquire an extra dock because of the existing regulatory standards. So, if they meet the standards, we don't expect that this would be, allow every property to have a dock because many wouldn't be able to meet the standard.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment. I agree wholeheartedly with the gentleman's analysis. We would not be here tonight if we didn't meet the standards, strict standards of conservation. There's another thing you might not know about, or you may not realize. When they changed the flood maps in 2014, a lot of areas that were not velocity zones became velocity zones, they used to be A zones. It's, it's effectively impossible to meet the standards of the Conservation Commission to have a dock in a velocity zone. So, there's another layer of protection because a lot of the areas of Green Pond now are velocity zones. So, it's not related to the same reasons for protection, but it's sort of, it's like a self-enforcing prohibition, if you will, because it's in a velocity. A lot of it is in a velocity. We happen to be far enough upstream that we're not in the velocity zone.
So, in effect, if we went to a policy to restrict more docks here, we would be telling two property owners or three property owners, no, you can't, because we've already told them they can't, either for the velocity zones or for the Conservation Commission restrictions. So, not that many more, they couldn't do this anyway.
Sounds like it.
Any further comment from the public?
Well, I just want to say too that it's very helpful that we follow the Conservation Commission's decision, because I always read their, their documents and also their conditions. And they, I find it enormously helpful because our point of view is really the public good, and their point of view is the protection, you know, of the environment. So, I think together, I think how, how we view these is, is very helpful. I think we benefit from it because you don't, you don't hear first what, what we have to say, but I think it's very helpful to know what the Conservation Commission says.
Should we take a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Would you like to render some findings and a decision on this tonight, or are we taking our advisement?
Well, I think we have enough information, and I think the Conservation Commission's done an adequate job of placing conditions on this project. So, I would move approval with the additional stipulations to limit the, what's your...
Boats to one.
Limit the number of boats on this, more to this dock to one.
So, reiterating the condition that the Conservation Commission's put in, that there will only be one boat at the dock, as part of our findings also.
That's right.
In addition to their standards and special conditions.
Do we have a plan? Do you have one that we could sign? Do you have, oh, you have a plan?
That's right.
I have an extra to you.
No, I'll make the motion if I can see the plan. I remove approval of a plan for 194 Acapescot Road dated October 28th, 2015, with the condition that only one boat be permitted at the dock.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to correct, but there was a revision on November 12th.
I don't know if you have that planned. You should, but I'm not here today.
Oh, here, 11, 12, 15, at Soundings? Okay, then I'll change my motion to approve a plan of 194 Acapescot Road with a date of November 12th, 2015, and adding a restriction on one boat at the dock.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
Well, let me ask, does this plan cite the special and standard conditions of the commission?
No, that's in their, in their document, but their, this plan reflects their conditions, I would assume.
Well, there's a lot of narrative beyond...
But we approve, we approve a plan, and a plan dates, that's what our approval is.
Okay.
Okay. The order of conditions, Conservation Commission, doesn't need our rubber stamping to hold.
The plan does, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes are...
Thank you very much.
Next item is a change of license type from seasonal line of all common victual license to all alcohol common victual license. So, Quicksil, I'll see, the business is Quicksil Taqueria for the applicant, Beth Colt.
Hi. Thank you so much. I'm Beth Colt. I'm the managing member of Quicksil LLC, and we operate Quicksil Taqueria at 6 Luskam Avenue. It's on the ground floor of the Woods Hole Inn, right across from Coffee Obsession in Woods Hole, and we're open seasonally. We're, have long had a beer and wine liquor license. We would love to have an all liquor license, and we sell a lot of tacos. We'd like to be able to sell margaritas with our tacos.
Questions?
So, do you anticipate, I mean, it's all alcohol because you have to have that for a margarita? Is it expected that it's going to be a...
I don't have a lot of room to build out like what you would think of as a traditional bar, and I do not plan to stock a full bar. I just don't have room to do it, and I don't think it matches the business particularly, and there are a lot of other options for that, kind of, sitting and sitting at a lovely bar nearby in Woods Hole. So, we currently have flavored waters and a very popular sangria that we ladle out of big jugs. We'd like the ability to do a fresh-made margarita that we would serve in the same, in the same fashion.
Okay. Any other questions? Right, anyone in the public who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in the public who'd like to speak in favor of this license? Opposed? Get on, state a motion to close the hearing.
Still moved, second.
Motion second. All those in favor closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. And now what would you like to do?
I would like to move approval of a seasonal all alcoholic license located at 6 Luskam Avenue, Woods Hole.
Second.
Well, before we vote, I'll read our license hearing notice. It's a little bit out of order, but we are, given under chapter 1 through the general laws, the Quicksil LLC doing business Quicksil Taqueria apply for a change in their seasonal line of malt liquor license to a seasonal all alcoholic license located at 6 Luskam Avenue. The hearing will be held in Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, February 22nd, 2016. And this was published on February 12th, 2016, the local newspaper. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
We'll be there soon.
Looking forward to it.
Not, but not too soon. How soon can we be there? All right. Our next, we have another wetland hearing. This is for Jeff and Shannon Conway. I'll slowly read the hearing notice on this one because it's not till 7:50. The Falmouth Selectmen will hold a public hearing under section 24077 Wetland Regulations, the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, February 22nd, 2016, 7:50, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of Jeff and Shannon Conway to install a four by 20-foot private recreational dock and located at 5 Avawa Lane, Falmouth, Mass. Here affected is Oyster Pond. Trustees may review the file in this hearing in Selectman's Office. Publication dates Friday, February 5th and February, February 12th. Mr. Borselli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again for the record. Michael Borselli from Falmouth Engineering. And I represent the applicant, Jeff and Shannon Conway. This project is much different than the project you just now reviewed. This is a freshwater, effectively freshwater pond, even though it's called Oyster Pond because it's almost totally landlocked, except for the Trunk River, which is very shallow, at least at the moment, to Vineyard Sound. So the, there are no shellfish, even though the name of the pond is Oyster Pond, believe it or not. It's in effect like a freshwater pond. And there is no proposal to use any motorized vehicles. This is simply a, almost like a canoe or kayak launching platform. It's four foot wide by 20 feet long. It is replacing an existing structure of similar size that if you went to the site, you'd see is actually submerged. It collapsed and the previous owner didn't maintain it. And the new owners want to remove that and rebuild what was there so that their family has better access to the pond. There's a small cove that the house is on. So there's not a very intense use. There's no shellfish or ill grass, of course, because of the water type. We did go to the Conservation Commission and review this with them. And originally, the proposal was for a longer structure. It was, I believe, about 40 feet long or 45 feet long. And it had a T. And after meeting with the Conservation Commission and at their suggestion, we scaled back the size of this to simply a four foot wide by 20 foot long elevated platform for the purposes, just reviewed. Meets all standards and order of conditions was granted for this structure. Harbor Master doesn't really comment. There's no issues of navigation, no shellfish, of course, no ill grass. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? And as it says in the conditions, nothing's going to be stored on the docks. So any of the kayaks or boats will be stored upland
Yes.
and not on the dock itself.
I do want to point out that we received some communications by email from a person who owns property there but doesn't live in town permanently regarding the, what do I want to say?
You should motorize.
Yes, they used to motorize boats or vessels on the pond. And I'm not aware, maybe there is some prohibition that the association has. But there's, this, these, the plans for this particular dock do not include any motorized boats at all. So I just say that because I think it's important to let people know, or if the person is listening, that we did hear her comments about it and whether or not the Quissid Pond Association Group or the Trust wants to take that up at any time or if they already have. And we just don't know about it. But at least you're aware that somebody who does live there has some concerns about motorized vessels on the pond.
But just to add, not about this particular plan.
Not about this project. It was not about this project, but it was related to the project. Just don't you know.
If I could also just point out special condition five prohibits motorized vehicles in the Conservation Decision.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yep.
For this particular dock?
Yeah.
For this dock.
I guess I was a little surprised to see that as a special condition because I didn't think motorized boats were allowed in Oyster Pond at all.
I guess it's like belt and suspenders. Doesn't hurt to be extra safe. So they, they just reinforced it in their decision.
And it may be limited to certain kind of motorized. It may be when it's gasoline empowered as opposed to the small electric ones that
Right.
are a small fishing boat. Any other questions from the board? Is anyone here who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Kristin Alexander. I'm going to butter to the new dock. And you're right, there's motorized vehicles, but they're electric, just for the record, that are allowed. I'm glad that the dock is smaller. It was going to be enormous. And this is a little tiny cove. So I'm glad it's smaller. I still feel it's not small enough. The current dock was 16 feet. I don't think it was permitted, but it was 16. Now it's going to be 20, so that's better. And that's, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Do we go with all our questions?
Yes. Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
I'm going to make a motion to grant the application.
Based on the document dated?
November 30th, 2015.
Second.
Motion second to approve the plan dated November 30th, 2015. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, it's important to note that since only five of us are here, it does take a majority of five to approve. So that's good.
All these people who were, had the hearings, because all of these hearings need a super majority, were notified that we would be limited to only four of us tonight. And we're comfortable going ahead with our application. We have two more hearings at 8:05. And just make sure we have enough people to be here. I don't think we have anything else we can move forward on. But why don't we do our individual Selectmen's reports starting now? So do you have any individual Selectmen's report that I'd like to add to? Mr. Patterson?
I'll mention only one thing. Actually, two, two things. You received, I think, in your emails today, if you haven't seen them, a request from the Conservation, excuse me, Community Preservation Committee to actually fill out any identified needs that the community has. This is a process, a needs assessment that the CPC is going through right now. And I would just encourage you to complete this if you have any projects that you would like to propose to them. And certainly to let any groups or individuals who want to advocate for a particular project know about this so they can get their preferences in. This is an overall assessment. And then individual project applications will be presented to the CPC and they'll act on those accordingly. But just wanted to highlight that. And the only other thing I was going to mention, because this is the only other.
I just had a quick question on that. That seemed to be addressed to the board as opposed to individuals. So maybe, I guess I'm requesting clarification on that. But what I did when I received it was just forward to the chair a request that it be put on the agenda.
Okay.
We'll do so.
I overlooked that it was from the board itself, so. But I'll nevertheless indicate to you that they do open it up to the public for any identification of needs in town. And I would just advocate, you know, Community Preservation Fund is a result of 3% surtax on our real estate tax. So we contribute to this, plus some matching funds from the state. And so this is an opportunity to actually, you know, have a say in how that is invested in our community. And I think that the CPC has done an excellent job of stewarding, of being stewards for that portion of our, of our real estate taxes. And just want to say, this is a chance where you get your two cents into what you think are good projects that will benefit this community using those resources. The last thing I was going to mention, because I went to a Conservation Commission meeting last week, is that they're going to do a report. And I couldn't do more than just second that and thank them for all the hard work that they do. You see the extent of the, really the vetting that goes through with all project applications and a great deal of respect for their hard work and their efforts to preserve the natural resources of this community.
I'll just quickly mention that I'm the liaison for the Energy Committee. And they are doing a lot of work in terms of trying to make some plans that coincide with the five-year strategic plan for Selectmen and to be in a position to guide Selectmen in terms of building concerns, energy concerns, various monies that are, money, opportunities that are out there from the state in terms of green projects. And so I think they're going to be in a, in the near future inviting other committees that might be interested or who have related projects to give some feedback to that and hopefully eventually make a presentation to the board.
Next agenda item I will move up is the request for a signed variance on the off premises sign. This is from the Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society. And they have signs in five different locations. And they're all on club members' properties. They placed on Monday, were moved on Sunday for the first week of the month from 8th of November. They do not need to go to the Historical and Designer View Committee. They just come to us for the variance. Any thoughts or comments? Entertained a motion to approve the variance then?
I will make that motion, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Takes care of that. All right, we're going to move on to our next hearing. And we'll add them into our agenda. This is another wetland hearing from the East Marine Corporation. The Falmouth Force Selectmen will hold a public hearing under section 24077 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, February 22nd, 2016, at 8:05 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of East Marine Corporation for the proposed project to include the repair of approximately 315 linear feet of existing timber bulkheads and site improvements at 89 Falmouth Heights Road, Falmouth, Mass., including installation of vinyl sheeting, piling replacement, tie rod replacement, drainage improvements and all associated excavation, dewatering construction utilities. Area affected is Falmouth Inner Harbor. Interested parties may review the file in this hearing in the Selectmen's Office. And this was published on Friday, January, well, February, sorry, Friday, February 12th, 2016, and Friday, February 19th. For the applicant, sir?
Good evening, for the applicant, Raul Disardi from Holmes McGrath, with the engineers and land surveyors for the applicant. This hearing is before you because we need a special permit for proposed repairs to an existing bulkhead on Falmouth Inner Harbor. The bulkhead has been licensed a couple of times, 1967, 1990 were some of the licenses. In 1990 was for the reconstruction of the southern half of the existing bulkhead. We're asking now for installing new vinyl sheeting or composite sheeting in front of the existing bulkhead because it's a bulkhead in the inner harbor. We need a special permit for this board. In December, we presented this project to the Conservation Commission. It was approved. An order of condition was issued in early January. This application before, for the Selectmen was submitted in the end of December. So I'm not sure if the record has the order of condition that was issued in January. But if not, I have a copy that I'm happy to leave for the record.
So you're saying there's another plan that's been revised since November 16th?
It's not revised. This is the same plan that was presented to Conservation. So the order of condition is based on the same plan. We just need a special permit approval for the proposed work. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
It's certainly a quite extensive job we're undertaking. Could you give us as quick a synopsis as you can as to exactly what it is you want to do?
So what they're going to do, instead of removing the existing wooden bulkhead, they're going to install composite sheeting in front of the bulkhead. For that, they have to remove the weller beams that are in front of the wooden bulkhead, slide in the composite sheeting in front of it, put new well beams and a new deadman system and tie it all back to a deadman system.
Is it going further out into the harbor?
It's going to be about seven to 10 inches. The permit for, from Conservation says not to exceed 10 inches. The composite section that we're looking at, it's about seven inches. But we have a limitation, no more than 10 inches.
And I guess I'm not sure, I understand, why are you going further out at all?
Why we're going what?
Why are you going out further than where you currently are?
If we were to install it in the same location, that requires the removal of the existing wooden bulkhead so that exposes the entire length of the waterfront to the tidal action. And it's more detrimental to the wetlands. By keeping the existing wooden bulkhead in itself, it protects the wetland because it's a barrier between the excavated material behind it and the waters of inner harbor.
And if we keep licensing this every 30 years for a new bulkhead moving further and further out? Or is there hope that actually this one will be a plan that can be rebuilt and stationed as opposed to having to be further extended every new license?
Right, that is not the intention here, but I can see the concern. There could be a condition that no further extensions beyond this one permit be granted. Right now, the vinyl will protect the, what's happening in most of these bulkheads is that there is some settlements behind the wooden bulkhead because the wood-boring marine animals are creating some holes on the wooden bulkhead and sediment is escaping behind them. And it's happening throughout inner harbor. We've done a couple of the projects on the harbor. And sediments are leaving the area behind the bulkhead. So those settlements will not continue to happen if we put something such as vinyl or composite that cannot be penetrated by those marine animals.
I could understand, I suppose, if it was all vinyl product. But it, where you're just covering it, covering the existing wood with the vinyl product, it would seem that the insect damage could still continue behind the vinyl product. So my question is, has this material been used elsewhere in the harbor? And secondarily, what is the expected life of the vinyl material? And how does that relate to perhaps an eventual replacement of the bulkhead?
Right, the composite material has a life expectancy that's going to Right. The composite material has a life expectancy that's going to last anybody here over 100 years. The deterioration of the wooden materials behind the vinyl can continue to happen, but it will not leave the site. So the existing, maybe three-inch sheeting that's wooden can deteriorate, but it's not going to infiltrate into the harbor. So the vinyl will eventually protect everything behind it from leaving the site into the harbor. So none of it is going to wash out. Now, the design for this composite is such that we're not considering that the existing wooden bulkhead behind it is part of the structural integrity. The structural design is based on just the composite and the deadman system that's installed about 20 feet inland from the bulkhead. So even if there was no structural integrity from the wooden bulkhead, it doesn't matter, because the design is just for the composite.
Just on that issue, if there is, you know, if the wood decays into some kind of sawdust, you know, the structural, there's going to be settling. So is that accounted for in the engineering design?
There would be some compression between the vinyl and the dirt. There's going to be that three-inch wooden bulkhead that remains. If that three inches compresses between the dirt behind the bulkhead and the vinyl, or composite bulkhead, that three inches does not reflect three inches on the surface. It will translate as some settlement, but we're talking about fractions of inches.
And did you say it's already been used elsewhere in the harbor?
The vinyl products have been used in the harbor. We've done the Tom Marina installation. We've done Tice Bulkhead at the mouth of Inner Harbor. We've done... There's a few others.
With the same application I'm talking about?
Most of those applications were done behind the bulkhead to provide the curtain behind the bulkhead and leave the existing wooden bulkhead in front of it.
So this would be the first time this particular application's been used in the harbor?
I don't know if I can answer that as a yes, because I don't know of any other project-
But to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, yes.
Thank you.
Just to make sure I understand, the plan is that they're going to be putting in the timber drag pile, what is it, about 20 feet away from the vinyl?
Inland, yes.
And tying that in with the tieback rods?
Yes.
And that's what's actually going to maintain the support of it or the solidity of it, is having those tie rods to the timber pile, and then the vinyl along here with the fill all the way in the middle. That's going to have some settling, but not enough that would be a problem.
Right. That's similar to the installation that happened from the license in 1991 down here, which was removal of the timber bulkhead, installation of new timber bulkhead with a deadman system. This area over here was from the 1967. We don't have much information if there's a bulkhead in that area. What is happening is, the owner has a boat lift. When he traverses this area, he can see that the bulkhead is budging. So they know that there is some structural integrity that is compromised right now. So they want to install this as soon as possible, so that they can continue to take their boats out of the water and travel through this area here.
For the questions? Anyone from the public would like to speak in favor of this application? In opposition to this application? Okay, we have no public comment?
Make the motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None. So what's the order of conditions we have here?
Could you leave a second on that, please?
I'll second.
So it's January 6th, 2016?
That's the date of issuance.
I want to see if that's the same thing I have here. No, it's 12/15. So these are the new order of conditions we have.
Right.
So that was not in our original packet, but that was not what was on the file with us.
Correct. He just handed it forward.
So that's more recent than what was circulated to us?
Yes.
There should be just one order of condition for this. Is it different one?
No, we had one that, one that was in our packet was December 15th.
That's the, you're reading the date of the hearing? I believe it.
Right. What would the board like to do?
Do we have a plan that we can cite?
Plan dated November 16th, 2015.
I move approval of the plan, well, of the, what's it, of the plan debated, dated November 16th, 2015, for East Marine Corporation and Falmouth Bulkhead.
Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None. The ayes have it.
I'll take it for that.
Start signing.
Thank you.
Okay. The next public hearing we have is an application for new common, all alcoholic common victual license and entertainment license. This is for the Bucha Corp. It is hereby given under Chapter 130 of the General Laws as amended. The Bucha Corp., doing business at Bucha Restaurant and Wine Bar, has applied for a new all-alcoholic common victual license, weekday entertainment license, and Sunday entertainment license located at 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, Northtown. Hearing will be held in Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, February 22nd, 2016, at 8:20, publication date, February 12, 2016. Welcome.
Evening.
Introduce yourselves and tell us what you're hoping to do.
Okay. My name's Bob Jarvis. This is my wife, Jen. We are looking for a new all liquor license, 7 and 22 Nathan's Ellis Highway. We are trying to buy the property. As you know, there was a fire there in 88. The building's been there for a long time. The restaurants go back to the 40s. We are trying to preserve that. With that said, our purpose is to buy the property, bring it back to where it used to be, put an Italian restaurant in there, get a full liquor license, our full staff, all tip certified. Little history about me. I grew up in the restaurant business. My parents started the Chart Room in '72. I started working there in '83. I met my wife there in '92. We bought the quarter deck in Falmouth in '02. We also own the Pilot House and Sandwich since 2013. I sit on the Board of Directors for the Massachusetts Restaurant Association. And that area for us is kind of, is where I grew up. It has a sentimental value to me. I believe that we're trying to build the property back up again. It's been let go for a little bit. So with that said, what we are looking for is a new liquor license that would go through, subject to an occupancy permit by the building inspector and a food service permit by the Board of Health. Also, at this time, we would like to ask the board for an entertainment license while we're here doing this.
You and your family have created a lot of sentimental memories for many people here.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I think we're looking forward to your operation there.
Appreciate it.
It should be a great addition to Northfalmouth.
Oh, we hope so.
I guess I just want to clarify. I thought you had said 7 Nathan Ellis Highway and 22?
It's 7. There's two pieces of property there, with the parking lot across the street, and then the physical building itself. So I just included the 7 and the 22 altogether, so that-
Even though none of our documentation's going to talk about the 22, because we're not getting a liquor license for the parking lot?
Yes.
Right, absolutely.
I just had a couple of other comments to make. It's not really relevant in a certain sense to the license, but you are aware of the intersection improvements that the state is planning to make somewhere down the road? This board has already voted to support a signaled intersection rather than a roundabout at that corner, you know, 151 and 28A?
Okay.
You know, where they connect there. Just so you know that there will be some, and probably there will be some enlargement, I think of the intersection and some of the lane, there'll be like left-turning lanes. At least, we don't have any plans yet.
I wasn't aware of it, but I appreciate it, and-
So it's something to keep in mind and probably-
Absolutely. So they're getting rid of the lights and putting in a-
They wanted to put in a roundabout.
New lights.
We voted against it.
Oh, okay.
They're going, "Hue!"
They voted against it.
I know. So-
That could get a little confusing, but-
That's what we thought. But it will be improved in terms of, there'll be, there will be a turning lane at the actual intersection, and probably just some, some kind of, some improvements to slow folks down right when they get to your restaurant.
Thank you.
There you go.
We're actually not quite sure what they're going to do.
Right.
It was our recommendation on a three to two vote that stay a signalized lights. I think it's actually a state highway. They can still do what they want. A long, long debate that we've had on that issue, but just so you're aware, something's going to happen.
Okay. Should I be nervous? That's the next question.
I don't think so, actually.
I think it takes up half my parking lot.
I think you'll like it.
I think it'll be an enhancement for your apartment.
Okay, sounds good.
And just in terms of the dates, when would you expect to open? When would you expect to start serving? Are you going to try to be open during renovations?
No, not during renovations. Definitely not. There's a lot of renovations that we're looking to do. Like I said, the bones of the building are in unbelievably good shape. It's just the cosmetics are not, so... And in our business, you know, you are, you have to wait, you know, every, you know that it goes from here to the A, B, C, C, and then down the line from there. So we, you can't do anything from that point in time. So no, we would not be open until then, so.
And just a quick follow-up. And the capacity would stay the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's one other comment I wanted to make. Parking across the street on 151. Some of those spaces in the front belong to the town, and the other spaces in the back, and I had suggested to the town manager a few weeks ago when I saw your application, that he might want to sit down with you and talk about that, and see how the town could cooperate with you in making that, you know, maybe some kind of improvements to that parking area, knowing that the town is a part-owner of that lot.
Thank you very much. I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, well, I'm a historical person.
I do know that people in Northfalmouth look forward to having your restaurant back there again.
Absolutely.
So I hope that it can work out really quickly with the other licensing you have to do. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? How about in opposition to this?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. And now we have to decide what we want to do, and this is both on the-
Well, I would move approval of a new all-alcoholic common victual liquor license, weekday entertainment license, and Sunday entertainment license, located at 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, because that's what's on the hearing, Northfalmouth.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Just a quick question. You haven't actually closed on the property, is that correct? But we can still-
It's contingent.
So it will be continued upon their closing on the property? That's a question.
Yeah, I don't think there's any way legally we can do any of this without that, so.
Well, that's what I was thinking. So it's contingent on that, so this will take effect on the close of the property.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Congratulations.
No, thank you.
Drop by the venue as soon as it's all set to go. That does it for our public hearings. Now for the big meat of the meeting. We have our legislative update from our state representative, David Bierra. Two for Mr. Madden. Great to see you.
Perfect timing. Representative Madden just came in from Antigua.
Yeah.
Tennessee, Boston, right? Thanks for having us here tonight. We do this occasionally once or twice a year, just do some updates. And since the House Two budget proposal has come out, some of you may have seen some of those numbers. I thought it was a good time for us to be able to come in and update a little bit on that, but also some other projects that are particular to Falmouth, some bills that are pending, one that had a hearing today, one that had a hearing tomorrow, and take any questions or thoughts from the board. So I wonder if you want to do a little introduction?
Well, yeah, thanks, Dave. First of all, before we get going here, I want to offer my gratitude to Ernie Pat Flynn for all her service. And Rebecca, she's not here, but the two of you leaving this board is going to be a huge void. But I'm sure we'll have people from the community that'll step up and fill that void. But I just, you know, I've enjoyed so much working with the two of you. Rebecca, prior to this board, being with the school committee, it's just, we're just so fortunate to have people like these two women that serve this town. And I just, I'm going to miss not seeing you next time I'm here. And I know we'll see you plenty with the county commissioners, so we won't be stranded.
And Pat is the only member of the board of selectmen who was actually on my Eagle Scout citation.
Don't make me cry.
Dave got that when he was in his early 40s.
Wasn't that long ago, really? Oh, my goodness.
But, you know, Dave mentioned a couple of bills. The municipalities did report out favorably the land swap at the town with the Westfalmouth Library. So we know that the library wants to get moving on that, so Dave and I will work with Senator Dimasino as well to make sure we get that moved along as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. And the local lodging tax, that is being heard tomorrow. Revenue here will have that. So we'll let you know what kind of the feedback we get from that. But as it stands right now, we've had a few of those bills. There was some thought about kind of doing an omnibus rooms tax, and I'm not sure if that's going to happen now or not. I wouldn't bet on it happening this year.
I don't think it's going to go as quick as what one did this morning.
Right, exactly.
The speaker did commit to no new tax increases in this term, and that was what stalled this bill on his previous application to legislature. The speaker felt like he had to keep this commitment that he gave in his policy speech, and believed that that was a tax increase. And therefore, there were nine, I think, of these local home rule petitions, and none of the nine moved.
So with that, you know, I think the town has made their position known. You've came up and met with the speaker a few years back on this issue yourself. So with that, you know, I've learned in the legislature is that, you know, I remember years ago, and I won't mention who it was, but there was a rep who told me we're going to never see gambling or casinos in Massachusetts. And lo and behold, it was two years later before we voted to do that, regardless of which side of the issue you were on. Bottom line is, things change, and we can always, if it's a good idea- we can always, if it's a good idea, I trust that eventually it will happen. So with that, I know, I didn't want to seal Dave's show, I know he let me know he was coming up here today, and I just felt I would come and kind of bring you up as a speed on those couple of items, and once again, it's always a pleasure to come for you guys, and if you have any issues, don't hesitate to reach out to the town, I know Julian and Heather have never hesitated to pick up the phone, and that goes from both ends, you know, I oftentimes will call them when I need information, and they're very responsive, and quite frankly, I think they feel as if we can be the same for them, work together. So with that, Dave, go ahead, jump in as we need to.
Sure, a couple of things that happened this year, you saw this summer that the State Executive Office of Environmental Affairs Secretary Matt Beaton came and brought $500,000 to be able to close the land deal in Oyster Pond for the purchase, and the earmark that we worked on in the environmental bond bill was actually an $800,000 earmark. And because of the hard work of the Oyster Pond Environmental Trust, and the collaboration with the town, and the 300 Committee, and the CPC, we were able to get the number down to a half a million, what was necessary, and so as the administration was beginning to develop their capital plan, they were bringing a check to Falmouth, because they believed that it was an example of a public-private partnership, multiple organizations and entities working together, and we were able to do a $2.2 million land purchase with only a $500,000 state investment, so we were very happy to see that money released at the early time of the bond bill.
Yeah, and once again, Senator Dimasino was very helpful with that as well, but the beauty of that was, we didn't have to put even an amendment into the budget, Dave and I worked with Chairman Goldby, and were actually able to get it included in the bill, which made it a lot easier, road to hoe, if it's already in the bill. So with that, the new administration came in, they picked right up where we had left off, and fortunately they were able to come up with the funds, so once again, it was a collaborative effort, and getting it in the bill itself was huge, and we had a nice hike that day, didn't we?
Yeah, it was actually, if you remember, when they found the first mosquito with the West Nile hit, that came out, and Ann was driving down here from Western Mass to, or Central Mass, to walk the land, and we're thinking, "Oh, I hope she didn't read the Cape Cod Times, because we're going out in that area," but we were out there in the mud, and we walked through the land, and she came back, and she said, "Boy, if you guys really think this is that important, we'll see if we can put it in the bill." And under that land purchase part of the bill, it was the only local earmark that originated in the House version of the bill, and it stayed through the Senate, Senator Dimasino made sure that it retained in the Senate as well, so we're very happy to have that. We also, as you know, the Mass Environmental Trust just gave a grant of $60,000 that we supported for the Coonamess River restoration, dealing with the dam portion of the project. And also, most recently, Greg Fraser, our harbor master, was able to get another appointment to the State Harbor Master Training Council. He had left the council for a while, and he called me and said he was interested, so we talked to the Governor's Office, and we resubmitted an application, and so Falmouth does have representation on the State Harbor Master Training Council once again.
Just on the restoration, Betsy was nice enough to take me around there last fall, so it's an exciting project, you know, those damn dams, we're going to move them, and little foot bridges, and all the things that are going there are exciting, and once again, you know, I have to admit, when I was out there with Betsy, we're very fortunate in this community to have the volunteers that we do, because she's done so much to make this project happen, similar to the group from Oyster Pond, you know, they make all the difference, and it makes our life easier when they're so well prepared, so Betsy, thank you, I'll get a chance to see you before you leave.
Another project that I wanted to mention is around the opioid coalition in Falmouth that Chief Dunn has called together, broad-based coalition, got the letter that the Board sent today to the Speaker, and other members of the legislature on the conference committee, trying to get a protective custody amendment that was passed in the House, retained in the conference reports, I want to thank the Board for weighing in on that issue on behalf of the coalition. Coalition actually had members in the legislature, in the House chamber, the day of the debate, we were able to bring them down on the floor and recognize that Falmouth had a broad-based community coalition, we had, Sam was there representing the town, and we had groups from the volunteer groups, and we had Randy Dwyer from the Teachers Association, who I'm meeting with tomorrow, the Teachers Association wants to mobilize the workforce in Falmouth, the teachers and staff, to help with this issue, and they were like, "What can we do?" So they're part of the planning process, and Administration Julian's been at all the meetings as well, so I want to thank you all for your support locally, but also for the letter that you sent today to the conference committee, we hope to see that come out in the next couple of weeks.
We have terrific teachers in the school system here, don't we Dave?
We do. Tomorrow, we're going to have a good discussion about how we can make these two things fit together, the work of the coalition and the work of teachers in the classrooms here in Falmouth, so another quick one is the bus station at Falmouth Depot, so we've been working on that for quite a few years now, there's a $1.4 million allocation, the contracts have been signed, and now we're dealing with some of the notification of encroachment of the abutters, the attorneys and bond代理人, still working on that piece of it, and then being able to move forward, the architect has been retained, the general, I'm not sure if the general contractor, the project manager, the project manager's been retained, and so they're already discussing the future relationship with the bus company, because they will reduce their footprint in the building to free up space for other options there, and so Mike Galasso and the EDIC is doing a great job leading that, it's kind of a unique partnership, where the state mass dot decided to lease a building, a long-term lease, to an entity like the EDIC, and then to be able to commit to almost one and a half million dollars to the renovation, so we're looking forward to, A, the renovation, and B, having it managed in a way that there's revenue to make sure that the maintenance is continued to be done. I remember when Tom Care was state rep, and he brought the funds back with Eric Turkington to renovate that building in the late eighties, with the agreement that it was going to be maintained through the rental agreement, and that maintenance obviously hasn't happened over the last 20 years. Looking forward to that. I wanted to give you a shout-out, you're here if you want to take some credit here for chapter one of the betterment in the town that initiated that.
Right, actually, I'll give the credit where the credit's due, you mentioned Representative Turkington before, he's someone who stayed quite busy in the town, as you all know, sort of the selectmen were somebody, but now he's working with, you know, the sewer issues here, which isn't sexy necessarily, but it's very important to everything we love and enjoy about the Cape and the islands, really, it's our estuary, we want to be able to have, you know, the water quality that brought us all here. And Falmouth made a big step, and one of the things they did, which I thought was very creative, was what they did, the betterments last year, it was set up as a home rule petition, we were able to get them all through fairly quickly, so that it really gave the motivation behind your constituents and our constituents to make those tough votes at town meeting, and in the ballot box, to fund these projects, and those are huge. After I saw that bill, I thought it had great idea, it was a great idea that other communities could benefit from, so I filed it as a local option bill, and the Governor signed it into all, a couple of months ago now, it's actually the chapter one of Acts of 2016, but it really came from Falmouth, you know, it was your idea, it was your committees that worked on it, and for those of you who were at home and listening, some of you in the room that might not appreciate what it does, one of the things it does is allows those betterments to be spread out, where right now it's statutorily 20 years, towns can accept this now, as you have done, to spread it over 30 years. It also allows for the interest rate, which many towns, including Falmouth, has qualified for zero percent loans, it allows them to pass on those savings to their constituents to make it more palatable, and I believe the town of Falmouth was basically, I think the bills were going to be roughly $1,600 a year, and it brought it down to like $540, that's huge, and that's where you get the buy-in, and that's where, you know, people realize how important the environment is, and it was a great idea, and I was glad to be able to make it available with the Governors and Dave's assistant to get that, so now that any community can do it, so great ideas, we try to replicate now and again, and we try to give credit where credit's due, so thank you, Town of Falmouth.
And the last thing is the cherry sheet, if you've seen that, the budgeted debt projection is a 3.6% increase for Falmouth, there's a larger increase in the discretionary aid than in the chapter 78, but there's increases in both line items, and because of the discussion that's going on around the charter school reimbursement formulas, there's also a projected increase in the charter school reimbursement, so we're looking at a 4.3% increase in unrestricted local aid, a 1.7% increase in chapter 70, and then some increases, I don't have the exact percentage, but an increase in the school choice amounts as well, based on the projection of the choice relationships with other communities. So for Falmouth, that's looking at about $315,000 increase coming this year, so that's the House two projection, that tends to be the floor when the House picks the bill up from the Governor's Desk, whether or not we can make any gains, so obviously we'll always look to do that, particularly in the chapter 70 area, we've seen the larger gain in the discretionary local aid, and so there is a movement afoot in the House to see if we can make some additional gains under the chapter 70 increases, so as you're getting ready to go into town meeting and with the budget, knowing that that 3.6% increase is probably a good conservative base figure to work from going forward. And then lastly, we're going to talk about it in a little while, the next agenda item, Farley Bog, I've been working with some members of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club and their affiliated Conservation Foundation to look at some options for reclaiming a cold-water fishery on the Child's River, and working with the state to do that, so we look forward to bringing that proposal forward shortly, and seeing if we can get some support from the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, and not really a question, but I kind of want to emphasize the point you made in terms of the bus station, I'm the designated member of the EDIC, and that project had completely stalled, we were getting zero traction, and it was a perfect example of Falmouth calling its representatives, asking for some help, and you just completely did a perfect job at breaking the logjam, really bringing the parties together, making the, you know, the state see how important this was, it was somewhat of a transitional period at one point in time, and I want Falmouth to know it would not have happened without Representatives Viera and Madden stepping in and doing what you do, and when you offer and say, "Let us know how we can help," every time we see you at every event, I'm sure every selectman has that conversation with you, and it happens, so I want you to know how much we appreciate it, and to know that, you know, you really have the system working the way it should, so the Falmouth gets the opportunities that it should.
And Senator Murray, former Senator Murray, also was very pivotal in that, and has provided a lot of the detail analysis behind how these things have been funded in the past, and how to move through the DOT with the pools were together, so it was a great partnership between all three of us working for it.
Quite so.
It took a little bit longer than we wanted, but we finally got there.
And Senator Dimasino stepped up as well, he's been part of our meetings, we just had one a few weeks ago, as you're probably aware of, in Boston.
Absolutely.
And, you know, sometimes, you know, government moves slower than most of us are used to at times, and it can be frustrating, but it's okay, you know, we just keep pushing, and hopefully, eventually, it'll happen, and this is, this I believe, will be a perfect example, that building's too beautiful to sit there in the state, it's a shame, it's disgusting that it got that far, but hopefully now we'll keep a better eye on it, and we'll get it done right, and we will be proud of it once again, so the EDIC has been terrific, Michael has been relentless, but that sometimes is what it takes, we have very full agendas, just as you do, and things tend to kind of end up at the bottom of a pile, and it's very important constituents to remind us to go through that pile now and again, and EDIC has been terrific with that, Michael especially, but Susan, you and I have talked about it on parade blocks and other events, so...
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Hasn't gone unnoticed either, thank you.
You have questions?
No.
Thank you both for coming.
We're so glad to have you, though, really.
Once again, it's a pleasure.
You're there for us, and that's what counts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have our agenda, is a proposal to restore the Farley Bog to wetlands, and to rehabilitate the upper Child's River. Mr. Anderson?
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak with you tonight, it's been a while since I've been up here, and I've missed you. I'm Gary Anderson from Precinct Seven, I'm also the treasurer of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, and I'm president of Sporting Safety Conservation and Education Fund of Falmouth, an IRS-approved nonprofit organization. Now, that name's a real mouthful, so we call it by its acronym, SEF. SEF is doing business as the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club's charitable foundation. I've given you a background sheet on our org, both organizations, so I'm not going to take your time up tonight telling you about us. Tonight, we want to brief you on a proposal we are working on to rehabilitate and restore two key environmental assets in the towns of Falmouth and Mashpee. The first part of our proposal is to create a cold-water fishery to foster the return of native fish to the upper Child's River, and second, we're proposing a restoration of the Farley Bog to wetlands. If you can get this to go. Okay. This map is a high-level view of what we're going to discuss. To orient you, here is Mashpee Commons, and coming down here is Route 28. This is Carried Shop Road, goes across a little causeway, the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club is located here, and here is the Farley Bog. The Farley Bog is accessed by a little dirt road that's owned and maintained by the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. The Farley Bog, right about there is a Mashpee Town Line, the town of Falmouth owns the southern portion of the Farley Bog, and the total Farley Bog is about 12 acres. Mashpee owns the very northern tip of that. Now, this little road continues up to the Garner Bog up in Mashpee, and the town of Mashpee owns the Garner Boggs. This road then continues on up to Old Barnstable Road, and that portion of the road is owned by the town of Mashpee. Oops, go back. The source of the Child's River, and you can just see a little, the southern portion of John's Pond up there, it rises from natural springs near John's Pond, and the Child's River flows south, down through the Garner Boggs, through the middle, very close to the middle of the Farley Bog, under Carried Shop Road, under Barrows Road, and I'm running out a map here, under Route 28 and out to Vineyard Sound. It's all one ecological system, from John's Pond all the way down to Vineyard Pond, Vineyard Sound, with the Farley Bog being a key point of connectivity. Herring and brook trout used to traverse up the Child's River to spawn in John's Pond, today not so much, the river's too warm and too shallow. The Farley Bog is completely surrounded by land owned by the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. The parcels shown here in white are in Falmouth, the parcels up here, they're kind of gray, are in the town of Mashpee. The club has recorded conservation restrictions on all of these parcels, so they'll never be developed. Previously, the Garner and the Farley Bog were farmed for cranberries. In March 2014, the last cranberry farmer notified the Boards of Selectmen of Falmouth and Mashpee that he was abandoning his leases on these bogs. He stated that cranberry farming was not economical for him. The Boards of Selectmen have turned over these abandoned bogs to the town conservation commissions for administration. Our understanding is that it's highly unlikely that another attempt will be made to put out a request for proposal for farming in either the Farley Bog or the Garner Boggs. So what will happen to the Farley Bog? Here are some pictures of the Lower Quashnet River area, the picture on the top left is from 1953, near Martin Road in Falmouth, when the space around the Lower Quashnet River was a cranberry bog. The Quashnet Bog was abandoned about a year after this picture was taken. The picture in the top right is taken from exactly the same location, but in 1983, 30 years later. Hardly recognizable, isn't it? Now, our concern is that the Farley Bog will go feral, just like the picture of the abandoned Quashnet Bog on the bottom left here. The only way to remove the uncontrolled growth of those invasive species that took over that bog was tearing it out, yard by yard, by hand. It's taken many years of hard restoration work by Falmouth resident Fran Smith and other local conservationists to restore the Quashnet River area. You can see Fran here, and you can also see him here, he was much younger there. Fran is a life member of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, and we're very fortunate... Fran is a life member of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, and we're very fortunate to have him as a member of our Farley Bog Restoration Committee. His extensive river and bog restoration expertise would be extremely valuable for this project. We have a window of opportunity now to fix the Farley Bog in a controlled way before it goes feral. This project that we're proposing could be a huge cost savings to the towns of Falmouth and Mashpee. And Falmouth and Mashpee could end up with a great bog restoration story, which could be an example statewide. The slide on the bottom right, trout from the restored Quashnet River, is just one of the results we seek. Tonight's an informational update for the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. We will soon meet with the full boards of both towns' conservation commissions. Next Monday, we'll make this presentation to the Mashpee Board of Selectmen. We're here to first suggest what the town can do to bring this proposal to fruition, second, to answer your questions, and third, to obtain your endorsement of the concept. Here's our proposal. The Falmouth Rod and Gun Club and SEF, in conjunction with local, state, and federal government partners, would undertake the realignment of a portion of the Upper Childs River to create a cold water fishery. We would also move forward with the restoration of the Farley Bog back to a natural wetland habitat for waterfowl and other birds and mammals. We've already gained interest and support for our proposal from the Massachusetts State Fisheries, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, representatives from Wacoit Bay Estuary and Research Reserve or Webner, and the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. This is an aerial photo of the Farley Bog, showing the Childs River running almost down the middle of it. There's a road encircling the bog, and right now, there is an existing little pond on the north end. Here's a drawing of what the Farley Bog might look like upon completion of this project. Now, please bear in mind that this is not to scale. We propose rerouting the Childs River from the middle of the bog to the west side of the bog. On the west side here is a steeply sloping wooded hillside, which would provide shade for the river and lower its temperature. Additionally, we would construct an embankment all along the river. It would be about three to four feet in height, and it would slope down toward the bog for about 15 to 20 feet. As I said, it's not to scale. We would plant native vegetation in this, bushes and native grasses, that would help, and would act as a riparian border, corridor, for this whole environment. This riparian embankment would help to shade the river from the east side, because you get the sun that comes in in the morning. This hillside shades it in the afternoon. It also would help prevent sediment runoff, and it would make for a gentle vegetation transition from the river to the bog. Now, we would alter the pond. You can see this piece of the pond up here. We would modify that. We would create a new little pond on the southern end, and the road encircling the bog on the north, the west, and the south sides would be removed and planted with native species to discourage dirt bikes and four-wheelers, which are currently a big problem in the bog. We would construct two-foot bridges across the Childs River on the north end and the south end, and the rest of the bog would be restored to wetlands planted with native trees and vegetation which do well in a wet environment, such as Atlantic White Cedar, Red Maple, Black Gum, and Blueberry. Achievement of these two objectives would provide nesting areas for waterfowl and songbirds, as well as a habitat for other animals. Realigning the Childs River would help cool the river and foster the migration and propagation of native herring and brook trout. Restoring the Farley Bog to wetland would reestablish a natural water filtering area for our precious water resources. The Rod and Gun Club has always allowed and would continue to allow public access to its significant acres of land for hiking and interacting with nature. This project, while enhancing those recreational activities, would also create educational opportunities for school field trips and scouts to observe nature and learn about ecology and waterfowl habitat of a restored wetland. A final benefit to the towns of Falmouth and Mashpee would be to shift the responsibility and the expense for administering an abandoned bog to two organizations which have land and water conservation as core elements of their mission. Rod and Gun Club and SEF have formed a committee of its members and state representative David Vieira. About a year ago, this committee met with and proposed its ideas to representatives of the Falmouth and Mashpee Boards of Selectmen and CONCOM, as well as other state and federal officials. Selectman Susan Moran, CONCOM Administrator Jen McKay, and Tom Corovo, the then-chair of the Falmouth-CONCOM, attended. Our initial proposal was met with overwhelming support and enthusiasm, and I might add that I have, we've presented this to the CONCOM very recently, and the new chair, Russ Robbins, was there also. This slide shows Maggie Payne, who is a resource, that's a hard one to say, resource soil scientist with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and one of her colleagues, and they're pulling a ground-penetrating radar sled across the Farley Bog. Now, this technology allowed them to create a topographical map of the Farley Bog. Now, I'd point out to the board that in this picture, you can already see some trees and some brush which are beginning to grow on the bog, maybe in its first stages of going feral. It indicates that there's a real sense of urgency to start the restoration process. This is a topographical map, and I believe you have a copy of this map in the packet that you have. It shows the depth where a hard sand bottom lies. If you can see, these little colored circles along here shows the path of where the sled was dragged across the bog. The sled was set to record depths up to 14 feet. Now, as you can see, there are no circles in the real center of the bog, and what that means is that the hard bottom is 15 to 20 feet more or further down. Now, each of these lines that are here, kind of surrounding the bog, as you head toward the middle of the bog, indicates about a two-foot increase in depth to a hard sand bottom. A critical discovery from these ground-penetrating radar results shows that the bog, which is an ancient glacial kettle pond, could support the weight of an embankment along the west side, because here, a hard bottom is about one to two feet down. Now, why is all this important? A recent experience elsewhere on the Cape of building a berm on top of Pete had the unfortunate result of the berm disappearing. It sank into the bog, causing the river bottom to actually rise up and flood the bog. Here are some of the steps that we must take to rehabilitate the Childs River and restore the Farley Bog. First, we would ask for both towns to transfer responsibility of the Farley Bog to the Rod and Gun Club. Next, we'd develop a project plan with timelines and cost estimates and identify grant opportunities. We'd apply for permits from regulatory bodies and perform engineering and soil testing, and then we'd begin construction and restoration. Next would be Phase Two, which is to extend the project to the Garner Boggs and Mashpee. A key consideration of the proposal is the control of and the responsibility for the Farley Bog parcel. This project will require a substantial financial investment, as well as significant hours of volunteer labor by Rod and Gun Club and SEF members. We propose two alternatives. Option one is to have the towns of Falmouth and Mashpee declare the 12-acre Farley Bog surplus municipal land to be acquired by the Rod and Gun Club. Option two is to offer the club a long-term lease on the Farley Bog. If the Rod and Gun Club acquired the land, it would agree to put a conservation restriction on the property, as it has done with all its abutting acreage surrounding the Farley Bog. This conservation restriction would be in the name of each town's CONCOM, which would ensure that the Farley Bog would be preserved in perpetuity in its natural state. In conclusion, we are asking that the Falmouth Board of Selectmen look favorably on our proposal to rehabilitate and restore two key environmental assets, the Upper Childs River and the Farley Bog. And we know there are many steps and a lot of complexity with a project like this, particularly when it involves two separate municipalities. In spite of that, we believe it's a very worthwhile project, and it will benefit fish, wildlife, and the land and water resources in both communities. The next step that we ask for is a vote for the board authorizing us to move forward to determine if the concept is viable. We're asking that the board of selectmen and the conservation commission board from each town select a representative to meet with the council from each town, along with Representative David Vieira and myself, to determine a means to transfer responsibility for the Farley Bog to the Rod and Gun Club. This subcommittee would then report back to each board for a subsequent recommendation on the project. Thank you, and both Representative Vieira and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to endorsement of our restoration project. Questions?
Ms. Moran?
Sure. Appreciate the incredible effort and careful thought that's gone into this, and also, I think the project kind of meets the, you know, the current demanding for collaboration of various groups, and in this way, especially where we have cross-town. And I'm just curious about going forward, what avenues do you have for funding until you get to your next steps' agenda? For example, I'm not sure whether a 21E analysis would be required, since it was a former bog, and I'm not sure whether there were fertilizers used there, or, you know, I'm just curious about what the first step before the next steps would be.
We have had several conversations, and we're very fortunate to have a very talented group in our own conservation commission. Ms. McKay and her group are very, very knowledgeable and have been helpful, and at least in one instance. She has given us some information about grants that are available, for example. And one source of grants that are available is the NRCS, or the Natural Resources Conservation Services, which is part of the USDA. And what they do is they will provide grants to private landowners to help them in projects such as this. And there are several other sources, which she's also indicated, the Environmental Quality Incentives Program, or EQUIP, again, part of the USDA, the Agricultural Conservation Easement Program, and there's a state program, which is LIP, the Land Owners Incentive Program, again, that provides grants, and this is actually part of the Department of Fish and Game in Massachusetts, that provides grants to, and financial assistance to, landowners. So one of the key processes that we would undertake is beginning to initiate grants. We do have a grant writer that's a member of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, so we're fortunate to have that. Plus, Fran Smith is very knowledgeable and knows his way through a lot of those resources in the state. Mr. Vieira can talk about...
The point is that those grant programs are only available for private land ownership, not town.
Yes.
Not town.
That's the beauty of this kind of partnership. I mean, this is, it's really impressive, you know, and it has such an optimistic kind of flavor to it, because you've gone, you've done such great homework in preparing, even, you know, for this point in the presentation. So appreciate all the effort on everyone's part, and tapping into David's expertise, I think, was very smart at the beginning.
Representative Vieira is also very knowledgeable about the legal and legislative aspects of this. The Farley Bog, I believe, and I would let him speak to this, is called Article 97 land. And we have talked with the town council's office to research that more, and that's part of what we're looking for, to have this subcommittee, a member of this board, the CONCOM board from each town, get together with town council, to help us work our way through that. Am I speaking correctly there, David?
I'll briefly address Article 97, so the restriction on the conservation land needs to be dispensed with, even if it's going to be used for open space conservation. But when you transfer that ownership, there has to be a two-thirds vote roll call in the House and the Senate, and the bill has to be signed by the governor. And so the preliminary discussions, we did some title analysis, and we've got some work that Pat Harris did for us from the Falmouth side, to look at the history of the transfer of this property to the town and where we go from there. And so there's a couple of different loops that we're going to have to jump through if we decide that we want to go forward and do this, if the town decides that they want to either lease it or they want to sell it to the Rod and Gun Club. The same thing in Mashpee, and then that means we're going to have to come to town meeting to get votes prior to petitioning the legislature to take those acts. And so those questions, one of the first steps we wanted to do is to figure out, can we even do that process and what does it take? But we didn't want to sit down with lawyers and get to that level of detail until we had a sense that the communities wanted to move forward with the concept, and then we'll get the lawyers in the room and figure that out, because we'll probably have to do parallel tracks here. That's going to take a while to plan for your future town meetings, and then you have to submit it to the legislature, and then we have to, you know, do the lift in the legislature. So we wanted to make sure that there was enough appetite between the boards of selectmen and the conservation commissions to even get to the point where a more concrete proposal could be put forward for your approval and then bring it to your town meetings.
Dave, maybe if you'd review, certainly the discussion we had at town meeting 15 years ago about this bog, and about doing everything we could to retain cranberry bogs. Do you think we're now in an environment where people say, "We tried, it didn't work, and it's now too late, and we need to move forward in another direction"?
So obviously, that was a question that came up early in the process, and I think there's two things that are unique about this. Number one, you did go back out to bid to allow this bog to be commercially grown, and it failed economically, it failed, with no one else interested in putting in an option to come back and continue to farm it. The other thing is, if you look to the east and west... If you look to the east and west of the bog, there are no homeowners, there's no vistas, there's no changing of private property values based on folks' perception of what value that cranberry bog brought to their private property. There is Article 97 land, north, south, east, and west. And so because of those two unique differences, I think that we would be ready to embark on bringing the cold water fishery. We have to deal with the dam as well. There's another dam south of Carriage Shop, so that's something we'd have to deal with as well, but to bring those fish up. And as you know, the Fish and Wildlife, the state division, has already been working in the southern portion of the Childs River, and we've had success with sea run brook trout in the southern part of the river. We just can't get them this far north.
Pat?
Well, my thought in having you present all this is that both bog and the river are truly valuable resources, environmental resources to the town, that have been kind of left to their own devices over the last several years, and so they're not producing what they could produce for the town. And I don't just mean in terms of recreation, or fishing, or money, or whatever else, but to have valuable resources like that and just let them be on their own, to find their own way forward, is not such a good idea. And when you think of what the end result could be, both with restoring the river so that it becomes functioning and beautiful and a place that people can enjoy, and then at the same time, improving the flow of the water with the ponds, I think that you've come up with a really amazing plan. Because, you know, that's, we're always looking at areas like this around the town from time to time, and it's, and when we, and when a group like you look at it, you always come up with something that probably nobody really thought of, and you're really looking towards the future. So I think this is a great endeavor, and I just commend you for getting together and putting this plan together and doing your best to make it happen.
Is that a motion that we have put out?
That's a motion, yes.
Step of approval behind this plan?
Absolutely.
Motion second. Sam?
I just wanted to ask a question. You indicated that the Rod and Gun Club welcomed visitors to your properties. Do you have any plans... Do you have any plans to kind of maintain Brown's Road there as an access, and will there be a little public parking area at Carriage Shop Road, or perhaps up at Old Barnstable Road?
Actually, right here, this is actually Milford Road. Brown's Road is up in Mashpee. There is a gate down here, the Rod and Gun Club put a gate there because we were having trouble with the four-wheelers and those kinds of things. It still didn't stop them, but it helped stop the partying traffic that used to occur around there. Mashpee has put up a gate, and, oh, by the way, there is a little parking area down just right off Carriage Shop Road also. I'm getting dizzy, David.
Right here is the parking area, and there's a gate there, and then there's a gate here. And these are all plots that the kids have built over the years that they were working with, Rod and Gun Club. And so, there is a small parking area here already.
And on the north end, the town of Mashpee has also installed a gate just a little bit south of Old Barnstable Road. There is a parking area there also, because the kids would come in from both ends and party in the bogs, and it was a real mess.
I'm not sure, you know, the South Quaters and Falmouth Academy do a watershed study all the way from north of 151, all the way to Vineyard Sound, following Child's River. Every year, they do that walk-
Really?
-to be able to follow the exact river, so I think it's going to be a fantastic thing for them to be able to-
Yes, we welcome it. Two other things. One, Selectmen Moran asked about the soil and whether there is any pollution. We have done a very little bit of core sampling of the soils. We have not done any testing of chemicals. We do, however, have a doctor of Woods Hole that is also a member of the Rod and Gun Club, and we would intend to do soil testing. There is some good news, and again, I learned from Ms. McKay that if we were to excavate where we are going to make ponds, we can, if the soil is contaminated, we do not have to haul it off, because we own all the land around here. We could place it on our property and cap it without having to go through all of the regulatory procedures. I believe that is approximately right? Okay, thank you. But there are ways that we would, that you don't have to go through all the compliance issues.
Any further discussion on our motion?
Is there anyone of the board that would be interested in participating in this subcommittee?
I'll be happy to continue where we left off if the chair wills-
So, I was going to suggest, so... So, I'll amend, suggest amendment to our motion to both endorse it and appoint Ms. Moran to be our representative of the committee.
Agreed. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You have your endorsement and you're a representative.
I thank the board very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the Rod and Gun Club, too.
Thanks, Lou.
Next, our agenda is to hear a report from the Conservation Commission, who we hope won't tell us we just made a huge mistake in supporting this vote.
Hi, good evening. Russ Robbins, Chairman of the Falmouth Conservation Commission, here tonight to give a report. Also with me tonight is Vice Chairman Mike Powers, Maury Hall Hawks, Jennifer McKay, Administrator, Betsy Gladfelder, and Kristin Alexander. Conservation Commission is made up of seven full-voting members and two alternates currently. I'd like to thank you for helping us get the positions filled, it was really, really helpful at the time. We were in need there for a while, we were short quite a few. Also to Sam, he's a liaison, he's always there, and I know that the members appreciate, you know, the support we get from the Board of Selectmen, so thank you for that. The Conservation Commission acted upon 385 permits and requests in 2015. Basically, on bullet point, the report that I gave you, the various types are broken down, and you can see from 2013 through 2015, the increase, steady increase, in the amount of the workload. In addition, the conservation staff reviewed over 357 permit, building permit applications since April 2015. This is important to note, because the system before, somebody would come in with a building permit, and if there was increase, if something was touching the ground, conservation had to sign off on it. But what was happening was DNR would sign off on it, MES, and, you know, those guys are busy, too, but it would get left in a filing cabinet, and it might take a week, might take 10 days before it gets signed off. Now, with Alex, and she's doing a great job, she gets these things right out, you know, it might be a day, it might be two days at the most, which helps with the efficiency in another department. So, I just wanted to make sure that I brought that up and mentioned it. We had 38 public hearings and public meetings in 2015. Conservation Commission oversees 232 open spaces and conservation parcels within the town of Falmouth. The conservation land management technician works closely with the 300 committee to help maintain accessibility of this open space for public enjoyment. It's a continuing project, it's going to go on for some time, but it's, something's being done, and it's moving along. The next item on there is the Coonamessett River Area Restoration Project. Betsy's appearing before you on March 7th, so I'm not going to really go into much on that, and she's also presenting to us on Wednesday night on that. Additional land management projects include wetland restorations and vernal pool creations at the Bri Vogue Apostle and Blacksmith Shop Road, creating and mapping a trail system essentially for Route 151 to Nantucket Sound. Large project, but again, essential. A prescribed burn, this is another thing that we need to get out publicly, because I'm sure there'll be phone calls and everything else on it, but Mark Casperson's going to present, he's presenting on Wednesday, right? And then, hopefully, we'll get it out to the newspaper, this, people will know, and maybe calm some of the phone calls down. A prescribed burn will tentatively occur in April 2016, partnership with the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Mass Wildlife Refugee, through an MOI, through MOU, with the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen, signed last year. We will be soliciting quotes for the Shiffrick Ponds feasibility study, which was awarded funding from the CPC in 2015. The Conservation Department was awarded a service member from the Barnstable County AmeriCorps Cape Cod this year. Christine Viola began in October 2015 and works within the department two days a week cataloging and creating baseline documentation for all town-held conservation restrictions. Was Jen, was that the same, was that what Alex applied for?
The AmeriCorps?
Yeah, yes.
Alex did all that.
And lastly, the piping plover on there, for the last two years have been showing up down Trunk River by the Standing Sea Bike Path. Through cooperation, in a department of cooperation with the Department of Public Works, conservation staff, and the Mass Audubon employees, they established fencing along Surf Drive and a portion of the bike path. They want to prepare the three chicks throughout June to ensure their survival. And that's really all I have for you. Any questions?
Let's start with one. In the types of permits you reviewed, it's almost a 50% increase in the request for determination of applicability. Any reason why that's gone up so much? Is it people being more concerned about the regulations, or?
I'm not sure how to answer that.
Well, we can go to the source of all information.
Good evening, Jen McKay, Conservation Administrator. They're just smaller projects. People are just little additions, deck upgrades, things like that, that don't really need a full review under a notice of intent or order of conditions on the property. So, we try to handle those under RDAs.
Are the people trying to avoid the bigger application, say, "Oh, we can just do a little bit here and there"?
Possibly, but I mean, once a certain regulation is triggered, then a notice of intent is required, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions?
No, but I have a comment. I'm always thrilled to see when the town utilizes AmeriCorps workers, because they're absolutely fabulous. And the county gets about 30 to 33 every year, and this is the, this year coming up will be the third year of this current contract, and it's very hard to get a contract with the federal government. I mean, it's a federal program, and, because people all over the country. And the one thing that's so fabulous about the county's AmeriCorps program is that we actually house the AmeriCorps volunteers. Boston doesn't house theirs, other places in the state don't, but we have three houses, one in Welfley for the half of the group that goes to Welfley. There's another house that now houses the four members of AmeriCorps that are now in fire training, which is a new, a new part of AmeriCorps. And then the Bourne House houses the people on this end. So, I hope you keep applying for AmeriCorps, because they're great, great young people. They're all college-educated, that are just dying to get into the weeds, you know, I mean literally, and do all these environmental projects, so it's a great boon to the town. That's my pitch for AmeriCorps.
Jen, just remind me, that's a second one. That's a second one. Jen, just remind me.
We have a young man, Mike, who is helping us with the trail system, and that worked last year, and we just went to the presentation for the new AmeriCorps, the mandatory meeting, so we'll be applying for a third one next year.
Well, thank you very much for your report. I invited the different committees to come in and give us an update, and we truly want to show you the support that we can for-
Really appreciate it, thank you very much.
And also for having all the members up here. That was much appreciated, and for your longstanding service.
Mr. Chair? Sam?
If I can just quickly say that, I could tell you that this is a very hard-working group, and I really respect their experience and knowledge, and the fact that they're committed, and they come back, even though they get term limited, a year later, they're back on the application to get back onto the board. So, you know, I really want to thank them for the hard work that they put in, in trying to really preserve the natural resources we have in this community. And that includes the staff, as well as all the commission members themselves. Thank you.
And I have one other comment. You have excellent attendance. I mean, your members really do show up, so that's good, too. So, they must, you must like what you do.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you on March 7th.
Thank you.
Next item is a report from our DPW Director on the Water and Wastewater Monthly Report, status of our two big projects. Mr. Jack?
I think I'm making it right. Sam's very quick with the lights, which is good.
It's actually pretty simple. It's color-coded. Don't you see the little orange?
Good evening, thank you. This seems like a well-oiled machine these days. I remember when, no one knew how to run the computer, and nobody knew how to turn off the lights, so really come a long way. All right, this will be the report for January. I understand we're near the end of February, so I try to update it somewhat, so you're actually looking at a hybrid that's going to be between the two. Original construction on Long Pond Facility was 40.9 million. We had an 800, well, it was actually a $900,000 change order to the credit, and then $80,000 change order to the negative, so the net results is still about $800,000 on the credit side, but we will be having about a $445,000 change order coming up, and most of that, by far, is going to be for the remediation of the firing ranges that are just south of the site. And there'll be a number of other, smaller change orders that are incorporated within that. So far, we're about 36%. Given that we're in February now, we're close to 40% on a completed site. Been paid out $13.8 million. Project started April 27th of 2015, and will be done next May, so hopefully, the plant would be online for, not this summer, but the following summer. The cash graph, the light green line was their Methuen's projected earned value over the life of the contract. The dark straight line is what the adjusted value is, based on the credits that we had for the change orders, and the red line with the red triangles are what we've actually paid out so far. So, as you can see, the lines are staying relatively close together, which is good on a large-scale project like this, and given that we're now at month 10 out of 24, I would expect that to continue along those lines. Also, as far as the escalation goes, where you can see it's starting to curve up, that's generally where the construction accelerates, and we're in February now, so they're going to be taking advantage of the spring, summer, and fall seasons on construction, so it should start moving pretty good.
Wouldn't you also say any big problems would have already arisen?
Yes, yes, because most of them would be construction-related, as opposed to the mechanical or architectural. And from the mechanical side of it, we've already worked through virtually all of the questions and issues that have come up regarding process, so I don't expect, I don't expect much at all. And believe it or not, and you're going to see on some of the pictures and the graph and everything, that from a construction perspective, most of this that you're going to see now is the concrete construction. Then we get into the structural steel, which is the actual second floor, all right? So, it goes faster, easier, and better when we get to that point.
On that point, if I may, Mr. Chair, we've had a particularly mild winter. I mean, really, you know, no stopping or, you know, to speak of. Assuming, you know, if, for example, we got a more difficult winter, would there be less effect on the schedule and the cost, because you're further ahead of the project, do you think?
On both projects, meaning the Little Pond Service Area, as well as Long Pond Construction.
Saves me a question there.
There have been modifications made to accommodate the winter work, so they've been working continuously, have been very few days on either project where no work was actually performed. But we've been accommodating that, and the contractors have been accommodating that, and you're actually going to see a couple of areas where they did accommodate large-scale heating events in order to be able to pour the concrete and form it, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, overall, on the site, we had five concrete pores, another 381 yards of concrete. Hopefully, sometime, at some point, we'll start slowing down on the concrete. Most of this, other than the ozone contactor, had to do with the main plant itself, the interior daffwales, that's dissolved air flotation, so that was some interior pouring that was done. The elevated slab, you don't see it on either of these pictures, but I will be showing it to you. The elevated slab is, for all intents and purposes, the ceiling of the basement floor and the floor of the second floor. So, there are references to elevation 48 slab, that's what the elevation 48 slab is. We're installing a raw water pump station wet well on the intake screens. On the bottom picture on the right is a small shot of the wet well. I have a couple of other shots that are a little bit larger, I'll be able to show you later on in this. Forming the walls for the backwash tanks, that's the upper picture on the right. That's a little hard to see here, I have another picture that's a little bit better that shows you exactly where it's located, proximate to the building. The backwash tanks, there's actually two tanks there, they're going to be 200,000 gallons each, one is for backwashing the filters, and the other one is for the water that comes out of the backwash. And then the structural steel should be arriving on-site, and structural steel is when the second floor starts to go up, and we expect that to happen any time now.
Ray, is the pump station wet well the well closest to the pond?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes. So, this was a picture that you had seen before. This is looking from the southwest, or the southeast, to the northwest, and on the bottom right of the picture, where you see that truck with the crane on the back, that is the area where the backwash tanks are going to be going in. So, this was when the weather was actually fairly warm, if you will, at the very beginning of January. very beginning of January. And then this is where we were for the rest of January and today. And to answer this, uh, Ms. Moran's question about the wintertime work, you can see across the top of the pump chambers, how they've sealed that entire area with plastic. And then they had large-scale heaters inside the structure itself in order to provide heat for the entire building, uh, because the goal there was to make sure that the concrete was the right temperature there. Uh, on the lower right, where you see that black area, that's bent tonight, um, those are the two tanks. They'll be running split right down the middle, uh, coming off of the pump chambers that'll house the backwash tank and the clear tank. On the far right, uh, we haven't started on that yet, where you see those other seven chambers on the right-hand side, that'll be the eight hundred thousand gallon clear well that'll go in. Both of the, uh, all of these tanks will come up to what would appear to be the first level, the bottom part of that plastic. And all of that will be below ground when the entire project's done, so you'll never see any of that again. These are the pumps that will go into those pump chambers. There's five pumps here. They're called vertical turbine pumps. Uh, these do not have the motors on them at the present time, so they're stored outside, which is perfectly fine without the motors. The motors will go on the left side of the blue that you see, where the plywood's up against the volute there. And then on the right, where you can see the black plastic with the tape on there, that's actually the vertical turbines themselves. And they're about twelve feet long. Uh, they consist of multiple chambers in order to be able to lift water out of a hole and then push it on its merry way. So the first three are the larger ones. Those are the high-service pumps. They're going to be pumping water out of the clear well and out into the distribution system. And the other two pumps there are for the backwash systems. This is just another shot of those pumps. Uh, you can see how long they are. And then there, they have the screens that'll go on to the bottom of them, uh, sitting at the bottom of each of the pump assemblies. This is that forty-eight slab that I was referring to. So this is the top of the basement level. You can see that the rebar is in, as are the conduit, so it's ready for pouring. And there have been a number of pours already going on, on that slab, so that'll be done This is the ozone contactor building that is behind the main building. So on the left side there would be the main building and the pump chambers. The step-down area on the left are the pump chambers. So last, uh, when, when this picture was shot back at the end of December, they had just basically completed the slab. That's what they were working on there. And then this is now, the walls are going up. Uh, so this will be a separate structural building that will house the ozone contact chambers. This is some of the underground conduit. Last month, as well as this month, you saw some of the conduit that was going in the rebar in the building. Uh, this conduit is going outside. It goes under the garage foundations in this particular location off to the right. Uh, and then it's going to be going around the building. And we're putting this underground here as opposed to having to put it up the side of the building. So this is actually much better in the end. This is the raw water pump station. So on the picture on the bottom left, you can see the pond. Uh, this is taken from kind of a, top of a hill. And where you see the wood fencing, that's one of the wet well chambers, and that's the picture that you see on the right. Uh, just behind that, closer to the pond, is another chamber, and I have a picture of that because that's where the intakes both come in, into a manifold. They have eight, or twenty-four inch butterfly valves that would be able to open and close and isolate them. So they're going to be closer to the pond. Um, and this right here is showing that the slab is in on the wet well, and then the walls are getting ready to go up on that chamber. And then the building will get built on top of that. This is the other hole that you saw that was closer to the pond. You can see that there's a hose in that corrugated tube in the middle. And then to each side of it, you see black tubes with, um, a white cap on the top. Those are going to be the access ports for the butterfly valves that are already buried. Up on the right is the de-watering equipment and the black piping and white piping or the manifolds, uh, because it took extensive de-watering in order to be able to get these pits in there. These are the chemical tanks that arrived on-site. And no, we're nowhere near being able to use any of it. Um, but you can see the size of the tanks. That white up on the right is a trailer, a full-size trailer. So you, this will give you an example of the size of those tanks. But it's easier to get them into the building now, before the building gets closed off, than to have to deal with it later. These are just some of the fittings that are being stored on-site. They may look small, but each of these is thirty-six inches in diameter. Uh, picture on the upper right, that's a pen that I have sitting on the top portion of the flange there. Uh, you can see a little brown pen on the, on the black portion of the top flange. So those are a significant amount of fittings that we're going to be using on the plant. We see this every month. This is what the front of the building is supposed to look like when it's done. And this is what it looks like right now. All right? So we have a ways to go. Um, but about where you see the white area in the middle of the building there, that's, that's equivalent to about where the door would be, the entrance door. Some of this will be buried, and then that whole second floor will actually be built above that. So any questions on Long Pond?
I just have a question about PFOS, and I can't pronounce it. So perflora something or other.
Perflora.
One of the contaminants of emerging concern.
Right.
That we are finding now in some drinking wells around the Cape. But, um, just to, I guess, reassure myself that this, this facility will remove, um, chemicals like that, would you say?
I think the nice thing about the facility and the nice thing about the decision of the board, uh, during the feasibility study, um, ozone was particularly important as part of that, uh, because ozone has the ability, it's a very powerful oxidant, and it has the ability to react not only microbiologically but chemically as well. So it serves to break down organics, uh, which can cause problems, uh, and render them inert. Uh, it has a microlog, microbiological aspect to it, uh, being a disinfectant. Many people, if you read the bottle of water that you drink, usually it says it's ozonated, uh, which just for their purposes means it's disinfected. Uh, but then chemically speaking, it has that ability to render inert many of the other synthetic organic type of compounds, which these chlorof, flora, perflora, perflora, perfluorinated?
Oh, S, I, I cannot remember.
Yeah, I know. I have problems, I have problems myself.
Maybe.
But they are chlorinated, they are chlorinated compounds. All right? Um, but it has the ability to take them out to varying degrees. So there are multiple processes built in that this facility across the board. Uh, there's also going to be activated carbon, uh, within the filters themselves, so they'll serve not only as strainers but absorbers. Uh, they're capable of taking out many different types of chemical compounds to varying degrees. Um, so it's not just the things we know about, um, that we need to be concerned about, it's the things we don't know about. Because the pharmaceuticals, for many years, nobody knew about them. And so now they're saying, okay, but they're here. Uh, I think most recently, a few years ago, we had RDX up on the base. That's World Demolition Explosive. Nationally, it's not a problem, but for us, it happened to be because it was one of the chemical compounds that, um, was discovered up there. These types of processes can handle many of these compounds. It's not to say it'll take them all out at a hundred percent, but it provides the best measure of assurance that the town can have. So.
I ask because PFOS is showing up in a lot of drinking water wells around the Cape.
Right.
And, um, and I keep thinking that we really made the right decision when we went to the plan that, that the board voted on at that time, to just do it all.
Yes.
And not be selective about what could stay and what we, what we would remove.
Right.
Okay. That's a different board way back.
For Little Pond, started out at twenty point four million on the construction contract, presently at twenty point seven. Uh, completed thirty-three point eight percent, which is where we are right now, about a third of the way done. Started May of twenty fifteen, and hopefully we will be done before June or July of twenty seventeen. And potential change orders that we're presently looking at are in the, in the realm of about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, most of this, since the project is predominantly digging holes, uh, most of it has to do with digging those holes. So I expect that to continue as we move forward. This is the graph, and once again, um, on the lines, you can see that they're running relatively close together. Uh, the original budget is a blue line that's on the bottom of the green balls. And then where the green balls are, there's like a lighter blue line. That is the adjusted budget for the project. And then we have the red line with the, um, pyramids on it, and that represents what's been expended to date. So for a project that's roughly twenty-one million dollars, we're at seven million right now, about a third of the way through. But once again, these are running close together. And one of the reasons why you see the red lines higher than the actual projections is because, and you're going to see it when I show you the maps of the progress that they're making. So literally, they're getting paid for the work that they are actually doing, and you're going to see that.
Yeah, same question I had. The other one, this one may still have bigger problems than we haven't foreseen, as opposed to the other, on the, uh, water filtration plant, any problems would have risen. We still could come across things that we weren't anticipating.
Believe it or, believe it or not, most of the worst of it is already done and dealt with, which is very, very fortunate. And a lot of that was actually Spring Bar's Road and coming off of Spring Bars. And I'll be able to show you those mains on the map, all right, that were really problematic. Plus, we had the intersection up at Main Street, that was an unknown. We got a substantial amount of that footage already in, within the limits of the work of Mass Highway. And then we had the other section where we're going to be putting two mains in, going from the Admiral Key down to, uh, the Alphonse Street lift station.
And there's no more real major de-watering project that needs to be done?
No.
Because we're higher up now than we're at Blizz House, right?
You, correct. There's, there's some de-watering going on, but nowhere's near as bad as what we've had. So we're actually in pretty good shape with it. So for Maravista, Falmouth Heights is, for all intents and purposes, done. The mains are in, the services are in, up to the curb. Uh, the testing has been completed. So the focus right now is in the Maravista area itself. They took on the gravity mains, which is the northern part of Maravista, and the force mains or low-pressure mains, which are the southern portion of Maravista from Iroquois down to, uh, Sycamore. And, uh, for Spring Bar's Road, the trunk gravity main is being installed now from the lift station out to Maravista. Uh, that was a diff, one of the more difficult mains to install. It required, uh, extensive de-watering as well. Uh, they had continued with the lift stations for the mall lift station, uh, the slabs for the station itself, and the walls are complete. And they also had the, uh, wet well and the dry well complete, and I have pictures of those to show you. The Alphonse lift station, uh, thus far, they've had the slab installed and the underground vaults. And we're going to be working on upgrading Robbins Road lift station as part of this. And the Spring Bar's Road force main was completed. And when, um, Selectman Jones had asked about the, um, problem areas, this was one of the bigger ones. This was one of the bigger unknowns that we went into was on the Spring Bar's Road force main, because that's the Spring Bar slash Route twenty-eight force main when we went down Main Street. So for February and March, where we are and where we're going, uh, continue on with the gravity and force mains and laterals all through Maravista. Maravista Avenue proper, uh, going to be starting the gravity trunk main this coming month. And that's going to take two to three months, uh, to get in. Um, so through May, they'll be working on that. That's going to be very disruptive because the main there is deep. Um, it's going to take up a substantial width of the road for the trenching, uh, component of that. And then in the summer, meaning in June, they're going to need to periodically start connecting the side streets. Okay? So we will have limited access, um, during certain days in the summertime while that is happening. But they'll be able to maintain one lane traffic at that point. But for the gravity trunk main, that may not be possible. That'll be a complete road closure when that goes on. So we'll be detouring traffic around it. For Spring Bar's Road, uh, they're continuing with that trunk sewer from the lift station to Maravista, and that should be done shortly. Lift stations, um, the structural work at Alphonse, they still have to complete the building itself because all they have is the slab, uh, which is, but the structural's already done for the most part on the mall lift station. Then they'll proceed with the architectural, which is theoretically the outside of the building, and the mechanical components, which are the inside of the building. So on the upper right, uh, that picture there is a fusion machine for fusing two-inch force main pipe that's being installed in the lower half of Maravista. Picture on the bottom right is a picture of the lift station, uh, that was recently completed at the mall. And I'll show you how they did that over the winter. This is the grab, one of the gravity mains that's going in on the north end of Maravista, starting with Montauk. Uh, Cedar and Harrington were also done. Uh, but you can see it's a fairly deep trench, and what you can't see is right here at the bottom of that trench box, that little yellow spot. That's a man down there. So it's deep. Okay? Um, that's why I say some of the gravity mains up in this area are going to be relatively deep. We know we're going to have utility conflicts, uh, but it, they're, they're really making good progress and doing a good job on it. So this, too, is on Montauk. This is showing the main at the bottom of a double trench box. Conversely, this is the low-pressure area further down on Maravista. So this trench here is only about five feet deep. Okay? Much more compact, uh, it's faster work, uh, it's not as disruptive. This is what it looks like when they put that main in and, uh, patched the road. So this is the mall lift station that we had. We had these pictures up in December, so the upper-left picture here is showing the slab. This was the wet well that was going in. And then this area over here is where that wet well is. This piece right here happens to be the dry well, which I'll be showing. What they did to handle the winter, they built a tent over the slab. All right? They had scaffolding inside. As you can see here, they had scaffolding, and they put wood on top of the scaffolding, covered the entire area with plastic. They had heaters inside in order to be able to get the masonry, and that's one of the masons there, putting up the masonry walls, uh, during January. And then this is what they recently completed. This structure right here is a dry well. This is right next to the building itself, and down here, uh, is where the valves would be. Um, so that's why we have an aluminum ladder that would allow the operators to be able to access that. And then right next to that, this is that wet well that you saw sticking out of the ground. So this is about thirty feet deep. Uh, that's where all of the wastewater for the Maravista area will be coming into that container, if you will, and then we pump it out. So that is the wet well for the station. This is where we were back in early January, uh, from a color coding perspective, where you see the yellow lines, those are mains that are already installed. And the blue represents that service laterals were installed off those mains up to the home, or up to the property line, I should say. So here we have the Falmouth Heights area, which is complete. And when I spoke about the Spring Bar's force main, that Spring Bar's force main started here and went down Spring Bar's Road, came down out on the twenty-eight, and then went down twenty-eight, uh, Main Street and, and wound up at Scranton Ave. Okay? So that was, there were a lot of unknowns there, and we had to make some adjustments to accommodate it. Um, but that was one of the ones that I would have had some concerns about. And then, of course, the other part here was where we were making this crossing on the creek here, uh, for the gravity main that was going to be going out to Maravista here. That's what they're presently working on. They already got through this, so this is already done. Um, so the next slide will show some of the progress here. Uh, just try to keep in mind, well, okay, from, from the backside here, it's not so much this area to focus on as, as much as it is this area up here to focus on, because this map was as of the beginning of January, if you will. And they only had the three streets down here near Sycamore were done with the force main. The force main of Maravista had already been installed, and only Cedar Street up here at the gravity main. So in the last month, you can see that they're all the way up to Palm here, and that was as of last week. So all these mains here are in, and they're starting to move up now with those crews getting the connections in. And then they had Cedar. This was Montauk, and this is Harrington that they're presently working on. And then they'll be doing some of these other mains up here, like Priscilla, uh, working up in this area. And then this is the main here that they're going to be putting in starting next month. That's the one that's going to be the most disruptive. That's it.
Any questions on this project?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And the only other thing that I would add on that, that I can't remember if I saw it on the slider, I just glanced over it, but I'm almost positive I had it on there, that we did award the contract for the low-pressure, low-pressure pumps.
I saw that.
Grinder pumps, all right? It was 2.485 million was the actual total value, okay? So that, that contract has been awarded, all right?
Could you give a little more detail about the training that's happening next week on the grinder pumps?
March 2nd, I believe it's a Wednesday, 8:00 in the morning till noon time. So it is a full four-hour construction installation training. Its intent is for the plumbers and contractors, will literally answer any and all of the questions that they may have on installing a pump system. So, and they'll actually, they won't get, there'll be a certificate of completion issued for those attendees for that, so that can go a long way when people are trying to make decisions as to who they want to do their work, because this training is going to be conducted by Environment One Corporation and their representatives, so those are the ones that manufacture and provide the E1 pumps that we just acquired.
And I know you've been doing some work on, some suggestions about maintenance of these pumps, and I'm hoping, excuse me, at our next meeting, to be able to start our discussion about the towards policy on the grinder pumps.
And just on that, can you just spend about a minute on the kind of pumps that you actually chose, why you chose them, so the public has a little heads up on the LP pumps?
They're positive displacement-type pumps, all right? They come as a preassembled unit, which is one of their major benefits. So the whole thing comes in on a pallet, it's supposed to stay upright from the time it's shipped until the time it's installed. But as a prefab unit, you literally put it in the ground and hook up the pipes and hook up the electrical to it. Otherwise, it is, for all intents and purposes, ready to go as a prefab-type unit. So the other major benefit of this type is, given that some of these homes in the area are going to be in flood zones, and has the ability to have venting associated with it so that the cover is watertight, and then it's a function of how high you want the vent to go in order to try to protect the pump. Now, I know, even we had this discussion with the representative and the manufacturer, because that was a question, how high do you want to go? Do you want to go 15 feet in a velocity zone? 15 feet in a velocity zone, the house is gone. It's not there. The only thing sitting there is the pump. So I don't think that that, you know, really does that much for them, but at the same time, for a reasonable and possible foreseeable flood event that may be a few feet, you know, anywhere from, let's say, two to five feet or two to six feet, but they can put the vent in there wherever they want, so.
And what about warranties?
Five-year warranty, and it's a complete warranty, which means that it presumes that as long as you do not abuse it, and they know when a pump gets abused, but as long as you don't abuse it and it's normal use, then there are no charges for that. And there is no normal service for this type of pump, and that became important, too. There's a lot of things out there with a warranty, like your car, that says you've got to change your oil. You don't change your oil, you're going to void your warranty. You don't do certain things, you're going to void your warranty. There's nothing a homeowner has to do under this warranty as far as physically maintaining, or greasing, or oiling, or any of that with that unit or the assembly. The only thing is, it would have to be flushed out if they're going on vacation, or going to have that house idle or something like that, but other than that, there is no required maintenance on the system.
And are there statistics on percentages of pumps that fail within that five-year warranty?
I think that really is going to be more site-specific. We're probably going to be one of the only towns that I'm aware of that have the highest percentage of seasonal users on the system. Probably 50% are going to be seasonal users, and that's, that could be huge.
Did the media factory have any specific suggestions for seasonal use?
As part of this training, this will be the training for the contractors, and then we will also be having information sessions for the homeowners, all right, to let them know what they shouldn't be doing. And for all intents and purposes, I think I said this at town meeting, it's really simple advice, if it didn't come out of your body, don't put it in the toilet. That's the reality of it. It shouldn't be Q-tips, floss, you know, or plastics, or anything like that, no sticks, whatever the case may be, because those are the types of things that can impact any system. We don't even want them in our system. We have, they cause problems for us.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great.
Next item here, presentations from the petitioners for our petition articles.
Please, I'll stop thinking.
And just to remind the board, we're not having a discussion on these articles tonight. We have our next meeting on the 7th, which we will have discussion on, is just to hear presentations from the petitioners. So the first is Article 26, Richard Smith.
Richard Smith, Precinct 1, former police officer. I don't know if everybody knows John Busby. He was a policeman that was shot in the line of duty in 1979, and he retired in 1981. Left the town. There was, there was an issue with security. The town put up a fence, bought him a dog, and it was costing the town a lot of money to secure him, so he ended up leaving in kind of a fast manner. But the bottom line is, he retired 72% of what a police officer made in 1981, which amounts to today $2,000 a month. He's finding it difficult, he's in his 70s, and I filed this petition based on another fellow filing the same petition about 10 years ago for some retired police officers. And after I filed the petition, I was in contact with a fellow by the name of Ray McGrath from the IBPO slash NAGE. He told me that John was entitled to 100% of his wages back in 1981, and he wasn't sure why the town had not pursued it. And anyway, he forwarded a copy of the bill, which I left a copy for everybody. Basically, the town meeting can petition the selectman to write a letter to send to the legislature. The legislature would pass it, it would come back to the retirement board, and he would get 100% of his wages. So I'm not really up to speed on how town meeting works, how to write, how to write an article, so I may have written the article wrong. I don't know if you can amend it or make a motion to change it, but I'd just like to see the guy get some more money. I mean, he well deserves it. He's suffered for like 35 years, you know, constant pain to his jaw and his face, and first 15 years that he left here, he had to live in hiding. It hasn't been fun for him, so whatever you can do.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next is Article 26, Mr. Swig.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Ron Swig, Precinct 1. I have, I'm sort of the lead sponsor with my co-petitioners on the, on Article 26, which concerns moving ahead with one of the non-traditional wastewater treatment options that were approved in, in 2011. In 2011, there were a lot of non-traditional ones, in addition to sewer-ing, which included shellfish aquaculture, pretty reactive barriers, eco toilets, stormwater management, fertilizer controls, and a lot of different things. And over the last five years, a lot has changed. There's been a lot of new information that's come in, and, and we're now looking at moving ahead, and we are moving ahead, with the inlet widening project for Boren's Pond. And looking at that and listening to its lecture that, or talk that Ray Jack gave a couple of years ago on climate change, basically, his, his message was to minimize infrastructure as much as possible along the coast, and with inlet widening, we'd be putting in a bigger bridge, we'd be replacing the George Souza Bridge. I think it was the legendary shellfish warden in Falmouth as well, so there's some coincidence here. But anyway, in Mashpee, they have incorporated, and it's been certified by the state to explore in, in large-scale use of shellfish for water quality management. And for the town itself, there'd be the estimated savings of $90 million for its own internal watersheds, and for the surrounding towns combined, it's about $140 million in savings by using aquaculture, which is close to 35 to 40% of what the cost would be. So, so I'm looking, looking forward now to this, this coming town meeting. This looks like it's going to be a big shellfish meeting, basically, because there are actually five articles that involve shellfish. And one of them is to buy seed for the Marine and Environmental Services Department, another one is to develop an aquaculture program, plan, basically, and then there's an extension of the Little Pond aquaculture activity, and as well as developing a plan. But another interesting one is that the town may get involved in selling shellfish to recoup costs to keep the program going. So that's something that will be an interesting discussion, I think, at town meeting. But in looking at this, I was thinking that as the permitting process is going on in Boren's Pond for the inlet widening, we could also do in parallel a shellfish expansion of a full-scale shellfish operation there. And it would basically be working toward developing about up to 7 million oysters for bottom planting, so they actually virtually nothing seeing, and that should be able to take care of the entire seasonal amount of nitrogen removal. It could be cultured, it could continue to be cultured in Little Pond, which is 12% shortage in terms of nitrogen removal based on the models with the sewer-ing. So it'd be good to keep something going on there, or doing something else, it's more of a nursery for transfer to other estuaries. So the aquaculture would remove about 2,000 of the 4,000 kilograms of nitrogen required to meet the TMDL, but that's on a seasonal basis. I mean, if you go out now and look at the ponds, they're crystal clear, no odor, high oxygen, no fish kills, they're fine, and DEP has to, and MEP, the SMAS and MEP have identified that as a, as a factor. Now, what I see is that we would proceed this summer with the first phase of it, and would have, in combination with the other articles and the funding, which hasn't been quantified in the, in the warrant yet, but for the other articles, I'd come up with some estimate, and there's also about $560,000 of money that's still in Article 17 from 2011. So there's money there that, part of that could be used, and 100, 150,000 is available for monitoring, which would be a critical element in all of this. So I suggest that, that we move ahead with, with, with this full-scale demonstration project in Boren's Pond, and just to give a little bit, a little more of the history on this, is that I gave a presentation of Water Quality Management Committee on January 14th, there was some very strong interest in, in this idea. The warrant closed on the 15th, so I quickly put together an article, sort of a placeholder to move ahead with it, and then notified the committee the week later at our next meeting, so that everyone's sort of in the loop on this, and we're having a meeting on Thursday to talk about, for some reason, all the aquaculture articles, I'm not sure why exactly, but all the other ones. But anyway, it's good, I brought it to their attention and got it on the agenda, so we'll be talking more about it. So I guess, as you know, Virginia Valiella has always spoken about these various programs, you know, moving on parallel paths. So I see moving ahead with the permitting process, moving ahead with the aquaculture. If the aquaculture works, we may be able to save five and a half million dollars in building a larger piece of infrastructure in a rather vulnerable spot. So that's basically what this is about. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have invited the Water Quality Management Committee to give us a report on this article for our meeting before we make our recommendation. They are experts in this field, I feel, to get their, their report would be useful.
Right.
Great.
Okay, good. I won't be here on March 7th, so I'll miss that, but I would, anyway, my background, though, is in aquaculture for the last 35, 40 years, and a lot of shellfish as well. So it's not like I'm coming out of the blue on this one, so.
Okay. Next is Article 27.
Oh, me again, yeah, thank you. This one, this Article 27 is one that concerns, again, coming back to our wind turbines and trying to, to basically get the sentiment of town meeting in terms of how to move forward, continue ahead. As we all know, in the spring of 2013, it's a town-wide referendum, but it was a two-to-one vote to not finance taking down the turbines, and that included 54% of the vote in Precinct 6, where the turbines are located. At the last fall town meeting, in, yeah, 2015 fall town meeting, Article 2 passed by a positive vote to maximize benefits from the turbines and to minimize the cost of town meetings. So it was a strong, it was, it's been a consistent endorsement of moving ahead with the, with getting, getting a solution to the wind turbine issue. The town, in this article, I'm suggesting that the town take more proactive legal action to try and resolve these matters. The town has done, some taken good steps with that, they hired Hemingway and Barnes to work on the special permitting, and that has gone well. They brought in some wonderful experts to talk about noise, health, a lot of different aspects, in great detail, and, and clearly showed that the evidence was, there was real no evidence of issues outside of possibly nocebo types of things. So it, it is, that there has been a very excellent presentation, I have to applaud the town really for bringing in this, this firm, as well as the experts that came, came along. Also, one of two of your members spoke in favor of, in support of a favorable decision, Ms. Moffett, as well as Doug spoke in, Chairman Jones, pardon me, spoke in behalf of the board, and also asking for favorable, favorable decision. So I would suggest then that, that we continue that this be, we persevere with this and find, again, taking whatever actions needed to get this behind us, because it's long overdue. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, Article 28, Mr. Fineran. And Mr. Fineran, I'll ask that you make sure you keep your comments to the merits of a town council versus an outside legal comment, and not make any reference to the people who are actually holding positions, and if you do so, that will terminate your presentation.
Okay. Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. My article simply states, "A town meeting vote to instruct the board of selectmen to eliminate the positions of town council and assistant town council, and replace them with a competent consolidated contract law firm." This has been the trend of many towns, cities over the last 30 years. Of all the towns on Cape Cod, I believe we're the only one that still uses a town council as opposed to a law firm. A law firm has many more efficiencies. They have people on staff that specialize in different things. As everybody knows, it's laws are very specialized business process, or whatever. As it is now, we subcontract out most of our legal work anyway, and we enjoy none of the benefits from it, of it. I defy you to find a town in this state that has the budget that we have, that is the size of Falmouth, that still uses just a town council. I mean, it's an antiquated process. It's 2016 now, it's about time this town got into the 21st century. Thanks.
Next item, the discussion of vote request for exemption from the Falmouth Farmers Market.
Hi, Senator, thank you. Susan Ryan Kell from Falmouth Farmers Market. The Falmouth Farmers Market is a nonprofit, all volunteer board. As you can see, I've included a profit in law statement. We're here to ask you for a waiver, actually, a full waiver, or a waiver of 75%. The Falmouth Farmers Market moved last year, which proved to be a great move as far as parking goes, but business is down a little bit for our members. So as you can see, we're very limited in our budget for a large fee, especially the $2,100, which would cost to be at the market. $2,100, which would cost to be at the market.
So, if I understand, you're asking us to consider...
Well, looking at the new policy which I received this afternoon, let me just flip to that, excuse me. I don't know if you should ever consider the fee waiver, but I will start with that. There are organizations that are non-town entities that get a full waiver, and we were wondering what the criteria and how we would fall into that group, if there's a way to come under that organization structure, which is under the fee waiver on the second page.
Are you referring to the Village Association, the Falmouth Fireworks Committee, the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, the Falmouth SIPS, Falmouth Public Schools, Falmouth Academy, or the Town of Falmouth?
Yes, exactly. In that paragraph. You know, what is the criteria to come under that? We were started nine years ago by the town under the ACOM, but we're just wondering what the criteria would be to fall into that category.
Well, as I was writing the policy, it was, those were not organizations that collected any fees for people that were then using the property. And I think that was a major distinction, that these organizations are not having people come and charge the fee to use it.
So, the customers or the vendors?
Vendors.
So, for instance, like when there's the craft fair in town, for the Village Association, do they take a fee from the vendors that come to that?
No, they do. That's a good example of them. Okay. I have not heard that one.
I would think that also, if you would like to consider some of our benefits that we bring to the town, we bring quite a few benefits. Down in the middle of the page, in the first page, benefits, you'll see that we've donated two and a half tons of food to the service center, which is about $10,000 worth of fruits and vegetables yearly. So, a big thing is that the move is great. We love our new space. We love the parking, but traffic is down. So, we have our vendors, we haven't pulled them yet this year. We're just in the application process, but we've heard some grumbling from some of our, you know, farmers saying, "Oh, our numbers are down. What's going on? So, if we're going to have to pay, go from $100 to at least 700, that will be a steep charge."
What percentage of your vendors are actually Falmouth residents?
More than, more than 50%. I don't know the exactly, I mean, we always keep it more than 50%. That includes not only farmers, but artisan, you know, artisan. Knutska Farm does the chili peppers, more than 50%. And it's always, you know, we always give precedent to our vendors, farmer vendors, just who applies.
Well, the two options we have tonight, one is to grant the 75% discount, or the second is to decide to reconsider our policy that we established two weeks ago, and we'd have to do that a different way. We have this policy now established. We have not posted that we're considering redoing the policy. So, either we need to use the policy we've established, or we need to reconsider our policy in a future meeting to be able to grant what they're asking.
Is, so, is it a strict 75% or up to 75%?
Up to 75% of the daily charge.
And so, if it were 75%, what would that work out for the term of the permits for the, mathematically for the farmers market?
This is it. It's all 700 dollars.
We were also wondering, in our letter to you, would services in kind, in the past, we have done work at Peg Noonan Park in lieu of paying. We were thinking that there's a little garden area right outside the Harbor Masters office that Greg has mentioned, that he would like us to spruce up, so we could, in lieu of funds, take that on as a project and beautify that area.
So, when you were at Peg Noonan Park, there was a great deal of responsibility that the farmers market took for maintenance of the grass.
A lot.
A lot of that. What was, what were the grounds like at the Noonan, at the Marina Park? Is there, because again, as I tried to explain two weeks ago, it is not that we're trying to make money, it's, there are costs that the town does take on by having places, organizations there, and of the maintenance of that. Is there a way that maintenance of that can be more, that we can cover that cost by the maintenance of that?
What I've heard from EPW, we've done a great job, and the park looks even better than before we arrived. We take great care at stewarding our locations.
I, I think that this is a particular instance where the board should consider subsidizing it, you know, by virtue of not only the donations to the service center, but I think it's really a draw to Falmouth, and I think, you know, considering the, you know, obviously, we are in great stead of tourist economy. I think that's, that's one of the things that lends itself to the fabric of Falmouth. So, I, you know, this is, and I, you know, I think it's a, it's an across-the-board benefit. I'm pleased that the membership consists of greater than 50% of actual, you know, residents of Falmouth. So, for all of those reasons, I think we should consider...
I think the way we could possibly do it is if we said that, we'd already said the policy that the first and last day could not be waived, and so that would be $200. I would still encourage that the fee be $700, but we are going to credit 500 of dollars that to a maintenance of the garden area in front of the Harbor Masters building, is a way that I think we might be able to get to a compromise, saying, "No, the fee is $700, but in lieu of 500, we're accepting the maintenance of that garden."
Yeah, because I see the farmers market not just being a special event, but, you know, slowly becoming fabric of Falmouth. It's really, you know, it's becoming a regular event.
I, I think it has a public benefit that we can't quantify in many respects.
Agreed.
I don't know how we would quantify it, but it really does. I mean, people, that's what they want. People want a farmers market. And people who, whether it's here or Chatham or Orleans or Province Town or wherever, where people, when people are here in the summertime, they want the availability of those fresh vegetables and fruits and all the other good things that farmers market has.
Cider doughnuts. Cider doughnuts.
Yeah. That is our biggest...
Well, true. I mean, I, it's, you can't measure that, that public benefit, and it's an expectation that people have. They really expect the farmers market to be here. So, I'm all for doing what we can to support them in that way.
I really like the way the chair suggested. I think that makes a good, good reason in going forward, good precedent.
Does that seem like a kind of effort you guys could make?
That's, that's great, yes.
Okay, so the motion is for the fee to be, the required 200, reduction down to $700 and to 75%, but 500 of that will be seen as in-kind donation to take care of that garden.
Yes, that's a good plan, Stuart.
I'll second.
Glenn, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's start another one.
Anyone have anything additional they want to add to their selectmen's reports? You want a town manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, I advised the board a week or so ago that, consistent with moving forward on the creation of a new town website, we placed on the website itself a survey, a website survey for all interested residents to participate in. That will be, that was posted last week. That'll be available through Wednesday, March 16th. We encourage any and all who utilize the town's website now or in the future to participate. And I think like a two or three-page survey does not take much time at all, and we welcome that opportunity to help us fine-tune that from a customer service standpoint going forward. We also have a town meeting article upcoming, as the board's aware, and you've placed that on the warrant, to set aside funds to allow that important initiative to occur. So, I want to remind everyone and encourage participation by any and all on that website survey, so that we can make certain that we reasonably accommodate all requests for inclusion in that, the new town website. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
We did receive a response from Troy Clarkson with a report on the handover budget, and Sue Moran has volunteered to reach out to him to get some feedback as to how we might take advantage of what they do in improving the way we present our budget. I think we may find out we do a lot of things very similarly, but happy to get some more information and suggestions as to what we could do better.
And that'll be next Monday, so I'll bring back a report of the report.
Great, thank you. Any other business? Intend a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you for sitting around with us.